The City of Dawson Creek acknowledges that we are privileged to live and work on Treaty VIII territory and the traditional home of the Cree, Dunasee, Soto, Sicani, and slavy First Nations. We value the Métis peoples that live and gather here. We commit to upholding the respectful relationships these nations have built with the land, and we acknowledge our responsibility to carry that forward today and into the future. For store of business, two delegations, 2.1, we have Ashley Murphy, General Manager of Development Services with the Peace River Regional District in attendance, to go over the regional growth strategy project update. So, morning, Ashley, and welcome.
Good morning.
There you go.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm very excited to be able to provide an update on this project. So, today, we are going to...where am I pointing? Is this on? Oh, no. Helps if it's on, right?
Working? Ashton, I don't know if the thing's working. Oh.
Do I need to point in a specific direction?
It already shows that it breaks our stuff.
Oh. Wait, wait, restart the clock.
You got one minute, go.
See how quick you can talk.
Oh, there we go.
Pretty quick, but I want to make sure that people can understand what I'm saying, so.
Should we take a couple minutes, or do we?
I think Jeremy's first.
Okay. For those that are watching, we're taking a technical break. City Council back to order, so we had 2.1, we have Ashley Murphy with General Manager of Development Services with the Peace River Regional District in attendance regarding the regional growth strategy project and update. So, welcome again, we'll try this again, so.
Thank you. So, yes, today, we're going to go over an update on where we're at with the regional growth strategy project. So, we'll give a bit of an overview, just a recap on kind of the project and how we got to where we are today, and then go over some information that you will find in the regional drafts, the draft regional growth strategy, which is also being presented, the draft document, as a foreinformation report, I believe, on your regular board agenda later today. So, how did we get here? So, regional growth strategies, again, are enabled by the Local Government Act. They're initiated, prepared, and enacted by a regional district, and they help guide long-term regional growth management and support more coordinated region-wide planning. They can cover a wide range of interconnected policy topics, as you'll see and will go over later in this presentation. And the process is largely left up to each region, so this was done through collaboration with all member municipalities, and I'll speak to that in a bit. So, requirements include a 20-year timeframe and population and employment projections. So, the project was really led by a steering committee, and I want to take this opportunity to really acknowledge and thank the staff here at the City of Dawson Creek for their participation and dedication to this project throughout the past year and a half that we've been working on it. So, we had representatives from all municipalities. We also had provincial representation from Ministry of Transportation, Northern Health, Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs, some representatives from the Agricultural Land Commission. And as well, we did invite First Nations throughout the region to participate in the project with a member of Douygue River First Nation staff sitting on the steering committee throughout the project. We met five times in person and online throughout the development of the project to review key findings and provide input and guidance, especially in regard to some of those ongoing projects that the municipalities are undertaking, such as OCP updates, reviewing of strategic plans or economic development priorities. The staff were really critical in helping to provide insight with regards to those matters. And then they really also helped to support the RGS engagement and outreach. So, we are currently in the final phase, and I will talk a little bit about the upcoming dates and timelines that we're proposing. So, again, it really is a combination of staff and direct, staff and board direction, public and stakeholder input, and technical expertise, which was the steering committee. So, we did a significant amount of public engagement throughout this project, both in line, online, and in person. We had surveys, we had public open houses, we did postcard mailouts, radio ads, website advertisements. A lot of work went into that. And so, this slide just provides kind of a synopsis of some of the engagement that we did receive. So, we had over 1,800 visits to the project's Have Your Say page. We had over 750 in-person and online interactions and survey responses. 4,400 postcards were mailed out throughout the region and within all of the municipalities. So, a lot of work went in, and we had a lot of fun doing this. It was really great to get out in community and engage with residents. So, overview of the document, so, very similar to how most strategies, OCPs bylaws, are set out. So, we have kind of our table of contents, and we have a set of vision, or the vision, and then a set of goals and underlying action and policy items in there. So, the regional growth strategy does include population and job forecasts, which is a requirement under the Local Government Act. And more detailed information on kind of the current state of the region and the regional economy can be found in the regional profile document that was released early last year and is available on the project page as well. So, even with the highest growth projection, which would be about 19,000 people throughout the region, it's anticipated that most of that growth can be absorbed within the urban municipalities, and that's based on a review that was conducted by our consultants early on in the, in the project, reviewing official community plans and the like. So, land that's already designated for residential use can absorb most of that growth. And then this is in turn reflected in the regional growth strategy policies. So, this is the vision for the growth strategy, and overall, it came from the board's strategic plan, and then it was refined through the few rounds of engagement that we had. So, we put it out to the public to see how they felt, and so it was ultimately refined to this vision that we have today. So, the regional growth strategy has nine goal areas, as you can see on the screen, and each of the goals are in turn supported by a series of policy objectives, and they're very much interconnected. And so, I want to acknowledge that some of the key ones that throughout each round of engagement repeatedly ranked highest were regional economy, agriculture and food, and community building, or living well as well. So, those were always consistently the top priorities for residents throughout the region. So, the goal areas have a goal statement, and then a short description of the topic area, and then they have two to five policy objectives, and then two to eight supporting policies throughout that. So, we have PRD-focused policies, joint and collective advocacy policies, collaborative PRD-led regional projects, and so we'll talk about the implementations at the end. And some policies and actions do appear, as noted, in more than one section. So, some highlights, community building, recognize the City of Fort St. John and City of Dawson Creek as the PRD's main urban centers with their established services and identified growth capacity, and support growth in smaller urban centers, that is, within their official community plans' established development capacities, and then work collaboratively with member municipalities on fringe area planning throughout the PRD-OCP updates. So, those are some of our policies. We also have protect the character of rural areas. So, that's where we're going to be identifying and engaging with rural communities throughout the region on a rural settlement center study to identify which areas could be accommodate or could accommodate future growth, and that needs to take into consideration servicing as well, and what the implications and, and that could look like in the future. So, economic strength, support a diversified regional economy, and consider the development of a regional economic development strategy. So, as you'll see later on, most of the action items that, through this growth strategy, are directed at us at the, at the regional district, but will require a significant amount of collaboration amongst all of us to actually action and achieve them, so. Agriculture and food, this one, again, very important to the residents. So, work collaboratively with member municipalities, agricultural producers, residents, and First Nations to develop a regional agricultural strategy, and work with PRD member municipalities to advocate to the Ministry of Agriculture to protect agricultural land within the rural areas while recognizing urban development needs within municipalities. And so, that was important to several of the municipalities. We recognize that there has been some challenges having agricultural lands within the ALR, within a member municipality designated for uses other than agricultural. So, that's one of the things that we can collectively work to advocate towards. So, living well, collaborating for safe and healthy and active communities, and enhancing community well-being. So, the key one here is consider working with PRD member municipalities, nonprofit housing providers, and other housing development partners to develop a regional housing plan. And so, as you will be well aware, we just completed the interim housing needs report, and that was done in partnership with the City of Dawson Creek and several other member munis. But we do have to do a full review and update of the housing needs report for 2028 under that new legislation. So, we'll be looking to do that at the regional scale with all member municipalities. Hopefully, that's, that's kind of what this goal is, is directing, so. So, implementation. And as you can see, everything says PRD. So, we're, it's really largely focused on actions that the regional district will be undertaking, again, in climate, in collaboration with the member municipalities. And so, we've kind of broken them into one to four years, and then some of these other ones towards the bottom may take substantially more time to complete, just depending on our capacity and staffing levels and all of those other fun things, and board direction ultimately, to undertake the works. So, we do have regional context statements, and we've been working with the municipalities to provide information and background on how to do those. And then, they will be required to be updated in the OCPs within two years of adoption of the regional growth strategy. We also have to do monitoring. So, every year, we'll be doing a monitoring plan, and then every five years, we have to do a more fulsome review. So, timeline coming up, we're looking at having first and second readings, March 20th, hopefully, public hearing on April 10th, where we will then refer formally the, the draft strategy to all municipalities, and then municipal affairs in adjacent regional districts for formal approval by resolution. And then hopeful adoption, June 19th. And that's it.
Thank you, Ashley. We'll open it up to council for any questions.
So, I'm challenged by all community planning, because it seems to take an overly optimistic approach to things. There's several examples, but the housing projection for the City of Dawson Creek for the next five years was we needed, I think it was 400 to 500 in that ballpark at least, which is incredible. This city 50 years ago, I'm quoting a former administrator here, had a population of 13,000. It's now still approaching 13,000. So, what has led to this incredible jump in the need for 400 pieces of housing? I don't expect you to answer, but I'm just sharing with you the overly optimistic thing. You say diverse economy. Yes, I applaud that. What specific projects were mentioned for this area that would lead to economic diversity?
So, there are, thank you for the question. And so, there are several different policies that speak to it, but right now, under the implementation plan, we're looking at first developing a regional economic development strategy. So, as I'm sure most of you are aware, previously, we did have a regional economic development function at the regional district, and that was done away with, I believe, in 2017. And so, since then, the board has implemented several different service functions to provide a certain level of economic development support, but we don't have an overarching strategy. We don't have any dedicated staff currently. So, a lot of these economic development-related items are maybe being capitalized at the regional level as effectively as they could be otherwise. So, I think the first step would really be to undertake and see if we can reestablish an economic development function at the regional level. We know that a lot of our member municipalities do have economic development functions currently that are supporting economic growth and diversification. But at the regional level, there currently isn't that centralized kind of team to undertake that work. So, I think that would be the first step. Some of the things that were identified, again, were around that agriculture being really important. So, are there areas where we can help support that? And so, some of the, there's some policy area around, you know, reducing or supporting agriculture to explore new opportunities around climate-resilient crops and the likes. And so, we're also currently undertaking a regional climate resiliency plan, and we've tried to align the policies between those two documents as well, and then as well, some of the work that was being undertaken through housing, so.
So, apart from the, which will often be the necessary adaptation of agriculture to the climate change, which leads to loss of some things, but also the potential for different crops to be grown here, I haven't heard that there are any specific, in your answer, any specific focus on diversifying the economy. We have agriculture. Agriculture will change, given the climate, but I was hoping that was this group who's, who, who've been, people have been involved here have some specific ideas, because I do believe that it is necessary for all regions and the nation to diversify its economy.
Yeah, so, there are some other policies that weren't highlighted in the presentation, but that can be found in the, the draft regional growth strategy. And again, they're, they're more high-level policies, so I wouldn't say there's anything that's specific at this point in time. Again, without having some more background information to really help inform, and that's the intent of a regional economic development strategy would be, to help drill down into what exactly those key actions would be. At a high level, though, it would be, you know, supporting regional tourism, marketing efforts, work with PRD member municipalities and stakeholder groups to continue implementing recommendations from the regional Parks and Trail Master Plan. Addressing workforce housing was identified as important, so working with the natural resource sector to identify opportunities to minimize the impacts of industry on housing issues. Support secondary value-added processing and manufacturing in agriculture and resource sectors were feasible and appropriate. So, those are some other kind of policies. But again, this document is intended to be more high-level than very specific in terms of what sectors, where, how.
Thanks, Ashley. Thanks, Counsel Parzlo. Counsel Earl?
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, Ashley, for your presentation. So, in the preamble of the slide, it says this initiative was enabled by the B.C. Local Government Act. By enabled, is that mean mandated, or just any, like, is, is this something that the RD is compelled to undertake as, okay. So, the reason I ask, just because I notice a tendency. It happens here, I don't think, as much as it used to, but we put a lot of work into crafting these high-level documents, strategies, visions, plans, and four-year election cycle being what it is, new council comes in, and maybe they're not quite as committed to the initiative as the previous council, and the plan ends up on a shelf collecting dust somewhere. I don't think that's the case with this. I think the, you noted the annual kind of circle background and check-in. I think that's a good initiative to avoid things like that from happening. And the reason I ask about whether it was enabled or mandated is just, if it's something council undertakes voluntarily, or I guess the, the regional district board undertakes voluntarily, I think it's a lot more likely to be sustained as opposed to busy work we have to conduct because the province insists. So, other than the, the annual check-in, because I think the RD, by its very nature, is a bit more erratic in, you know, the various interests trying to, to align, what kind of teeth do you have, or does the, the planners have to, I would say, hold the board's feet to the fire, but keep the board focused on actually enacting the things they've committed to in this, which, as you noted, are somewhat aspirational, so there's a lot of wiggle room?
Thank you. So, again, as with any kind of bylaw or policy, there's nothing that essentially would handcuff the regional board to have to undertake anything set out in this document. However, with our annual kind of work planning process, this is where we would be identifying project priorities in alignment with the board's strategic plan or other work that's currently undertaken. So, it would really be up to staff to, you know, outline which projects, and then through the budgeting process, ensure that there's sufficient capacity. Yeah, there's, I guess there's always the risk that things could change. But again, at least having it outlined in a strategy such as this, I think, really helps to provide that fodder for when we take those projects forward for support. Again, this was developed with a significant amount of public and stakeholder input. So, this is really based off of what they said was important to, to them and to our region as a whole. So, I'm hopeful that that will help support it. Again, most of the projects in here, we're already kind of undertaking or starting to undertake some of this work. So, there's the regional hazard risk, geo-hazard risk assessment. So, we have applied for funding, and we're awarded grant funding for that project, so we're hopeful that that will kick off this year. So, that's just an example of something that's already kind of underway. As we go through and update kind of official community plans, that's where we'll be already looking at and turning our minds towards some of the things like the Rural Settlement Center Study, as well as those Lake Shore Development Guidelines or Development Permit Areas in those rural, or in those official community plans. So, some of these things are kind of already in the works and will be actioned over the next kind of one to four years, as outlined.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. Other questions? I had a couple. Once, thanks again for presenting, second time through it, so I understand a bit. I, so one, I guess, so the regional district will, the board will adopt this, or go through the readings, public hearing, and adopt it. So, it also states in here, so once that's done, it'll be a guiding document for the regional district. So, being a municipality in the regional district, what does that mean to all the municipalities? And I know it's a high-level guiding document, but is there things that come to municipalities with the regional district accepting this or adopting it?
So, at this time, there's nothing that's specifically directed for the municipalities to undertake through this document. Other regional growth strategies do have more prescriptive actions for the municipalities. We haven't taken that approach. It's the first regional growth strategy here, and really, it's more about that collaboration piece. So, yes, we will probably be coming to, back to council to look for support for different projects. The regional geo-hazard risk assessment one came in front of the board, I believe, for a letter of support. So, something, or in front of council, pardon me, for a letter of support. So, that would be an example of where we're looking for support from the municipalities to undertake works. So, that would probably be similar to what would happen moving forward in the future. The regional context statements would probably be the biggest, most impactful one. So, once the strategy is adopted, your OCP will need to be updated to include a regional context statement. And again, we've worked with staff and provided some examples and guidance on that. And then there is the opportunity underneath, through this process, to maybe update, if needed, the OCP to ensure alignment with the regional growth strategy. In speaking with most of the municipal staff, there's already a significant amount of alignment occurring between the documents. So, I don't foresee that there'll be a ton of that work happening. But again, that would be up to the municipality if there was things in here that they maybe weren't speaking to in the OCP and wanted to include in the future.
So, once this is adopted, and say you, the regional district did come back to all the municipalities, like, it's not forced that you have to go that way. Like, this is just an avenue that the regional district wants to go? Are you supportive of this or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, except for the regional context statements, which, by the board, or by council, sending a formal resolution, accepting the regional growth strategy, then you would have to include that regional context statement piece in the OC piece.
And then we, as a municipality, have 60 days from receiving, like, basically from today to, if there's any feedback or anything we would like changed in it, or doesn't fit within the municipality?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other questions, yeah, thanks for coming in, Ashley, and appreciate you taking the time and for all the work. And also, thank you to the, the team at the regional district for their efforts for this. But I also know that you did thank the City of Dawson Creek team, but I, I believe all the municipalities were highly involved, so just a thank you to everybody, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, next, I'm just going to vary the agenda and go to three, 2025 Strategic Priority Chart. Is there any updates? No? Any questions on any strategic priorities? No? All right. Next, late items. I don't believe there's any late items. Five new counselor business. Counsel McDonald.
Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Worship. I just want to take an opportunity right now just to speak up and, you know, just denounce the terrible graffiti that happened at the Treaty VIII Tribal Council in Fort St. John. Truly, with this week being Pink Shirt, Pink Shirt Day this week and the anti-bullying campaign, it seems very fitting that we, we stand up and join our voice in calling down such a horrific, terrible, disgusting act of intolerance and hate and racism, and just want to know, want to let people know that we don't agree with it. Those are not our values, and hopefully, stuff like that starts to go away.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, Counsel McDonald. Counsel Apollonio?
Thank you, Worship. Just updating you that I attended the Dawson Creek Public Library Board Meeting last Tuesday, February 18th. It was a good meeting, and of course, they're doing well there. And of course, later this afternoon, we will have the South Peace Society AGM, if you'd like to attend after the meeting, maybe if we finish early. And of course, I able to meet, I already told you to mayor that I able to meet the new doctor at the Marcyro Clinic, Dr. Vitalavia, and I'm just welcome him. Thank you very much for admitting me as part of his client. That's it.
Thanks, Counsel Apollonio. Counsel Parzlo?
Well, just to follow on from what Counsel McDonald said there, I mean, I appreciate he's brought that to council. I haven't heard of it, but it seems to me that we should, I'm just suggesting, and just wondering about this, we shouldn't convey that sentiment that was so well expressed by Counsel McDonald by letter to the Treaty VIII organization. Just a thought for consideration.
Thank you. Thanks, Counsel Parzlo. Any other new council business? All right. Next, we got six adoption of minutes, 6.1 minutes of regular meeting of council. All right, next, we got six adoption of minutes, 6.1 minutes of regular meeting of council held on February 10th, 2025 for adoption. Councilor Kemp, second councillor Sudnick, I'll call that motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. 6.2, we have minutes of public consultation for February 10th, 2025 for adoption. Councilor Kemp, Councilor Apollonio? I'll call that motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. Any business arising? All right, next, eight correspondence, 8.1, we have letter from Riley Brown Rodeo Fitness Club, received on February 13th, 2025, regarding a request for a letter of support for the South Peace McKenzie Trust Grant. Councilor Kemp?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move with the recommendation that we write a letter of support for rodeo fitness.
Thank you, Councilor Kemp. Do I have a second here? Councilor Earl, any discussion? Councilor Earl?
Thank you, Worship. And I'm fairly certain I know the answer, but I just want to double-check before I vote in the affirmative, because I do support the initiative. The McKenzie Trust Grant, there's no, because I see we have another request for support to them, we're not in any way inhibited by the number of endorsements, the things we could, it's basically, I don't want to say free-for-all, but you know what I mean? We're not going to preclude ourselves from supporting other initiatives moving forward by granting a letter of support for this, correct?
Correct. Through your worship, my understanding is it's a first-come, first-served basis, so, yeah, there's no issue with multiple supports or applications.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Earl. Thanks, Kevin. Any other discussion? I will call this motion to vote. Vote is closed and it's carried. Next, we have 8.2, letter from John Vedder, President, South Peace District Crime Prevention Association, received on February 13th, 2025.
I have to excuse myself?
Oh, okay. Regarding a request for a letter of support for the South Peace McKenzie Trust. Councilor Earl?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that the City of Dawson Creek provide the letter of support.
Thank you, Councilor. Do I have a second? Councilor Kemp, discussion? Oh, it says card pull. Yeah. Okay. I'll call this motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. Devin, could you grab Councilor McDonald for me, please? Welcome back.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next, our business, nine reports, 9.1, we have report number 25-009 from the Community Culture and Recreation Manager regarding policy amendment, special events policy. Councilor Kemp?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move the recommendation, the report number 25-009 from the Community Culture and Recreation Manager regarding policy amendment, special events policy be received. Further, the council approves the amended policy to rename the policy from special events policy to community events policy, add a requirement for proof of insurance for all events and proof of an L C R B special events permit for events wishing to serve liquor and permits, and permit the booking of public spaces for private events.
Thank you, Councilor Kemp. Do I have a second? Councilor McDonald, any discussion? Councilor Parslow?
Yes, I want to talk about the private-public interface, and I want to talk about insurance. First of all, insurance. Help me, remind me about the insurance issues. I am unsure, from my experience on the council here, when does the city pay for the insurance for some organization that is putting on an event that is sanctioned by the city? I'm thinking, when I say that, the parade. And also, I'm thinking of Mile Zero Park and so on. So, sometimes, the organization is directed to get insurance and the city will reimburse. And sometimes, the city, my memory states that it would be, for some, the city takes care of the insurance. Now, I'm quite confused about what triggers what. Let's take the parade. Once, it was run by one organization, and then, I believe, the Chamber has done it, or the Rotary Club. Anyway, I think I've spoken sufficient on the parameters, and so, what is the latest iteration on the insurance dichotomy?
Thank you, Councilor Parslow. Go ahead, Ryan.
I might need some clarification by Lindsay, who's with us today as well, to work through some of it. With respect, so, the community events policy is specific, say, for someone who's wanting to rent or use a piece of our property or something within our community outside of an area that's going to be, I'm going to use the word leased. So, we have the Mile Zero Park Society, right, who operates the Mile Zero Park, and in their lease agreement has terms and conditions outlining all the parameters as to how to use it, you know, insurance requirements, maintenance, all that sort of stuff. This would be something around, like, let's use an example of someone wanting to host a music festival in Ken Park. That would be, they would have to go through this community events policy and an event permit through the city, and they would have to meet those requirements, which is providing insurance to us, an insurance certificate, listing, meeting the requirements as set by the city, and then adding the city as an additional insured.
Let me sharpen your.
Sharpen?
You with another example.
Sure.
And I really, I'm, I'm, I'm not in any way voting against it, but it did raise the issue of insurance, and is this policy clear enough about insurance? And should it be? Maybe it shouldn't be, maybe it's some other policy. But let's take the Mile Zero Cruisers. Wonderful event. They take over the streets of downtown Dawson Creek, and it's something I personally look forward to seeing. Now then, is that organization required to take out some insurance through this policy? Or is, do they take out insurance in another way? And so, that, this is another example.
So, through your worship, understanding is that anybody that's conducting an event on our property, streets or otherwise, would be required to take out insurance to ensure that we're named as third-party. Something happens, you know, we have that insurance coverage. The standard practice, and I could be corrected, is that these groups are required to get their own insurance. The only times that I remember that we, in turn, would fund that is when they come to council and ask if we will fund their insurance because of some hardship or, or some other reasons that, you know, they may feel that it warrants council to fund it. That's how I remember. I could be mistaken in some of that, but that's the general, generality of it, is that we would require those groups to get their own insurance.
Just to clarify, this isn't new, new, right? Like, this has always been a policy, like, you know, whether it's.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
This particular policy, again, is, it's cleaning it up, it's making it more, I think, relative to what is actually happening. I think there was some confusion on why, between a community event versus a special event, and so, this being that they're all community events, and I think it's trying to rebrand it, simplify it and ensure we encapsulate some things that may have been missing.
So, it's, the, what, section 1C says, ensure insurance is obtained, and to notify the event holder of all necessary regulatory and operational approvals required. Now then, yes, that's necessary. The question that spawned in my mind is, it seems to be from my knowledge, that there, sometimes, the city tells the organizer that you get the insurance and we will cover it. And I'm not against that, but it isn't something that they've come to this council for all the time. I think it's been an administrative decision. And I'm not making an issue of this, it just seemed to me, if that is the option, shouldn't that be referenced here, that there is the option that in some circumstances, the city, and the three that I'm, I'm voting on is the parade? Some things that Mile Zero have done and some things, and I'm just raising the question of the Mile Zero Cruisers. And I'm also wondering about the seals and the use of the grounds for camping. If you're saying that in all instances, if they want the insurance to be covered by a city, they need to come to council, fine, but I'm not saying that that is always the case. Just listen to the dialogue from people involved in these organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Parslow. Ryan, did you have any?
No.
No?
I think that each circumstance is different. I don't remember, I don't have a recollection, again, different, Mile Zero Park Society, right? Let's just pick on them. They have a lease agreement and it's spelled out in there, so any activities that happen down there would fall under their insurance and their management of that area, as we've outlined for them. The others, I don't remember council or an administrative aspect for us to waive or to pay or to take care of insurance for these other parties.
Yeah, I don't remember on the short term that I've been here.
Yeah.
There would also, Councilor Parslow brought up the, like, the camping or, you know, on the seals. Is that something that, would they get separate insurance policies for that?
I would suspect that they would already have insurance to, as part of their organization and stuff, and that they would just have an additional rider on their thing, that they're hosting this tournament or event or activity, and that the city's named as a third-party insurer, based on the requirements and the minimums, and then that insurance certificate's provided to us.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Parslow?
So, what I'm hearing is staff has no recollection, which is fair enough. It's been a change of staff. I mean, Ryan was away for quite a while, and I would suggest you check into this. I have strong recollections of a former corporate officer advising, I think there was discussions with the historicals, who pays what insurance? And so, I have strong recollections. Nobody's done any wrong. I just think it's, the policy doesn't reflect this, and I think that we need to be transparent. If, there is an option of the council, in some circumstances, reimbursing the organization for the insurance, it should state the circumstances in which that is permissible. That is all I'm saying. But if I, my 80-odd years of age is saying that my memory is somewhat impaired, which I'm sure staff is not saying that, just look into it.
Through your worship, we will definitely take a look. As far as some of those reimbursements, yes, I think through some lease agreements and relationships we have with various groups, if we have a lease agreement, yes, that does occur sometimes, through lease agreements, but not through these other individual groups that come from us.
Mile Zero Cruisers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, they don't have a lease agreement for us, right? Because they don't occupy a space, so, those were those. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank. Thank you, Councilor Parslow. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call this motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. Next, 9.2, we have report number 25-031 from the General Manager of Development Services regarding R F P 2024-37 Child Care Program Partnership Summary. Councilor Parslow?
Yes, point of procedure here, I, some of us receive correspondence. Is that correspondence appropriate to discuss in open or in camera? I just need staff advice about that.
Sir, through your worship, I think, I think it's fair to comment on the fact that one of the proponents reached out and doesn't agree with the evaluation. I don't think it would be appropriate to get into the details of the evaluation of the R F P. So, my understanding is that the proponent that was not recommended by staff has reached out to some or all of council regarding them not being recommended. And that's fine. What I can assure you is that staff, a group of staff went through the evaluations, and based on the merits of it all, they recommended the one that they did. If this particular group has questions, which obviously they, they may, they should reach out to staff, and staff can debrief with them on why they weren't recommended. And I think that's probably the best course of action. Obviously, I can have Devin follow-up with them as well, following that. But what I would say is, based on the correspondence that you received, it does not change staff's recommendation.
So, I'd like staff to respond to this group. I think that's just courtesy, and if you're saying that the process was followed and the decisions still stand based upon the concerns raised, that's fine by me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Parslow. Anybody like to make a recommendation? Councilor Kemp?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move the recommendation, the report number 25-031 from the General Manager of Development Services regarding R F P 2024-37 Child Care Program Partnership Summary be received. For the council or the contract from R F P 2024-37 Child Care Program Partnership to Y M C A B C and authorize a partnership agreement for a five-year term with Y M C A B C.
Thank you, Councilor Kemp. Do I have a second? Councilor McDonald, any discussion? All right, I'll call this motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. Next, 9.3, we have report 25, report number 25-033 from the Utilities Manager regarding R F Q 2024-20 Granular Activated Carbon Supply and Installation Contract. Councilor Earl?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move the recommendation, that report number 25-033 from the Utilities Manager regarding R F Q 2024-20 Granular Activated Carbon Supply and Installation Contract be received. Further, that on the merits of experience and best value, council were the contract for R F Q 24-20 Granular Activated Carbon Supply and Installation Contract to BrenTag Canada Incorporated for the quoted price of $259,329.70.
Thank you, Councilor. Do I have a second? Councilor Sudnick, discussion? Go ahead.
I mean, obviously, not good to see the price escalation, not completely out of line with what we've seen in some of our costs over the last year or two with inflation. You know, who to, never in a million years would have thought activated carbon would bite us in the ass like this, but there we go. But, no, thank you, staff, for the work.
Thanks, Councilor Earl. Any other discussion? No, I just have a question, Kevin. You know, obviously, there's a huge increase, but how long does this last? Like, when's the last time that it was replaced? And do you recall, like?
Yeah, through your worship, I think it's three to five years is what we have to continually, because it gets used up throughout the treatment process, right? And so, yeah. And so, that's the, the challenge is that it's, it's an operational budget item that appears every three to five years as kind of a big uptick in those costs. But it's, it's obviously imperative that we do it.
Yeah, what was, what did it cost last time? Do you know? Because, I mean, obviously, they, like... Because I mean, obviously, they've like been taking into consideration on all the budgets. They've been inflation. But I'm just curious, what it cost five years ago?
Through your worship, I can insert, I could guess, but it'd be better if I actually got the number for you. And I could, like, council know here a little bit later. We'll just dig that up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? No? All right, I'll call this motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. Next, nine point four, we have report, report number twenty five dash zero three five from the Development Service Manager regarding regional growth strategy. Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, worship. I'll move the report number twenty five dash zero three five from the Development Services Manager regarding regional growth strategy be received for information.
Thank you, Councilor McDonald. Do I have a second? Councilor Sudnick, any discussion? Councilor Parslow?
These these documents may be may be necessary. I always have problems with them because they're aspirational in nature, just like the official community plan. And people do some dreaming and speculation. But to me, all these aspirational things, it should should be a reasonable confidence level that many of these aspirations can be achieved. You know, I always been taught in planning, you know, with unless something disastrous happens, that be external factors. With hard work and a bit of luck, you stand a fifty percent or better chance. Otherwise, you put all these resources into all these meetings, all the aspirational things, and then nothing really happens because they were just too aspirational, too too much of a stretch. I'm always been a bit of a student of some of these things as it relates to regional. I watched the, you know, I accept the regional districts. A membership on the board of the regional district or the regional districts is you really, you you take off your your municipal hat and you put on the hat that we think what's best for the region. But I've always, but I've observed how many directors, when it comes to something that affects their community, they take off that regional and then they become staunch defender of the municipality. And it's one municipality against another municipality. And I have real sense of amusement about that when I see in action, right? But there's so many different things in a regional plan that that are somewhat contradictory. You know, preservation of the rural area whilst encouraging industrial development primarily in the rural area. It's like the rural area is a pin cushion and it's been inserted with thousands upon thousands of pins, namely in wells and fracking and all that stuff. We talk about agriculture. Well, hopefully, we're concerned about healthy food. And yet it's contaminated by chemicals in our atmosphere. Water. Growth is dependent on an adequate water supply. Right now, we have a water crisis and the climate forecast people forecast that water is going to be increasing issue. And at the same time, we are contaminating our water supplies, not we literally, but generally, it's been contaminated by agriculture and by industry. And so it's full of contradictions to me. And and yet I do believe in planning. But I just, this whole area of local governance gives me the hevy jivy's. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Parslow. Councilor Earl?
All right. So just number one question to your to your worship. You'd noted in the presentation that we as a city have sixty days to provide feedback to the RD with respect to any concerns we have. Would you, if we go through this and find any, would you like us to submit those to you? And you can pass them along or just you and Kevin? And that's something we can bring up at a council meeting later to to kind of ratify a list and send them along if we find it necessary?
So through your worship, I'd suggest maybe if council comments, maybe we could get them to Kathy. She could collate them and then we could.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I looked through it. It's a lot. And as Councilor Parslow noted, it is very, they use the term high level. I'd use the term aspirational. And, you know, in my experience, there's nothing wrong with having aspirations and wanting to coordinate and plan and, you know, collude in order for the the region's best interest. The issue I always have with this stuff is it's not the planning and the high level stuff where things fall off. It tends to be the, okay, what does this look like as an actual policy that a real human being has to execute on? So I'll be interested to see what that looks like. And, you know, what, as I was trying to get at in the present, what kind of teeth do we have to actually follow through on this? Or are we just making busy work for ourselves that we don't have any, you know, appetite to pursue when it comes down to, okay, what resources are we going to allocate? What? You know, what's, which staff member is going to be responsible for getting this thing done? So I'm curious to see what that inevitably looks like. But I'll forward along to you guys if I have any thoughts and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Earl. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call that motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. Next, ten bylaws. Ten point one, we have report number twenty five dash zero two two from the Deputy Corporate Officer Regarding Fire Protection Amendment, Bylaw Number four five nine nine, two thousand and twenty five. Councilor McDonald?
Thank you, worship. I'd like to move the report number twenty five dash zero two two from the Deputy Corporate Officer Regarding Fire Protection Amendment, Bylaw Number four five nine nine, twenty twenty five be received. Further, that Fire Protection Amendment, Bylaw Number four five nine nine, twenty twenty five, which includes amendments to align the bylaw with the new Fire Safety Act, be given first three readings.
Thank you, Councilor McDonald. Second, Councilor Appolonio, any discussion? Councilor Parslow?
Section four point one five, designation of fire investigators. So the people there are quite natural to to that function. But are they trained?
Sir, through your worship, yes. The individuals have been trained in investigations. And so that's why they're being named in the bylaw.
So just supplement to that, then, is when do our external fire investigators, what triggers them? Is it the insurance companies? Or or is it, this is so complex that the fire chief determines that we need expert, more expert?
Yeah.
People?
Sir, through your worship, I believe you're right in that is that probably on the complexity and the level of comfort of when you're dealing with an investigation. And if they feel like, you say, the complexity of it requires maybe an additional set of eyes or outside assistance, then they can call in the fire commissioner.
So the last, last point, then, this this amendment allows for that? Or should it be, should it be part of the of the bylaw?
So through your worship, I I don't believe that anything, this does not change that ability. I think that is always at their disposal to be able to call that. I will certainly double check to ensure that it doesn't impede anything, but I don't believe it does.
Thank you, Councilor Parslow. Kevin, I just had one question just in this, and I'm assuming it doesn't, but just because there's lots of reference to the different firefighters and what they do. But is there any like added positions that come from this or any changes to compensation in any way? This is just really just for the the Fire Act?
Yeah, so through your worship, this is just aligning our current bylaw with the new Fire Act. And it was certainly a question of, obviously, we had when we were going through this and and the new act came out and they were educating us on it. Wanted to ensure that this wasn't going to result in a whole bunch of new positions or new work. And and the answer is no, it's just utilizing the people that we have trained in staff to just the new definitions and those positions that are within. So we're fine.
Thank you. Other discussion? I'll call this motion to vote. Vote is closed. It's carried. All right, next, eleven mayor's business, mayor's updates. Community conversations, I had a bunch in the last few weeks, nothing that really jumps out. Juniper Board Meeting. There was, we've been having those monthly. I'm actually not a board member, Councilor Sudnick is, so he might want to add something to it. I sit there as a liaison. But a couple of updates from that board is they're working on their charity status right now, which is a big thing to get moving forward. And the Juniper Board is kind of the nonprofit that runs the the medical clinic, would be the easiest way to say it. So there's, there's probably about eight to ten board members on there. We've been meeting once a month, so there's been lots of progress happening. But really, the charitable status is, I think, the biggest thing. I don't know if you had anything. Yeah, okay. The Exploring Art Group, I had the privilege actually to go meet with Rosemary Reed. And then there was, there was probably ten artists there, including Councilor Parslow himself. So it was, it was nice to go there and and see actually what they do. I had, you know, if you get the opportunity to go, I would go. It was pretty amazing. You know, what they do for art, but it's way bigger than that. It's about community and mental health and wellness. There was so much more to it. But one of the main reasons they wanted to meet with me is just that they are losing their spot. They're currently at the Northern Lights College and they're looking for a place. So they just wanted to show me what they offer and really just, you know, they did ask if, you know, if the city potentially had a spot, you know, in one of our buildings. They did talk about, you know, some of the other city facilities. So it was just more bringing awareness, but and working with them to to try and find a a place that's suitable for them. So I just wanted to thank them for taking the time for me. It was, yeah, it was great to go there and just listen and and just see really like, you know, you see it with the arts and culture, how much it brings to the community. But when you, when you're in there and you get to see these, these artists and what they offer and that it's more than just what they're doing, it was, yeah, it was just reassuring how important it is for our community. I had an open door day a few weeks ago. Wasn't the most successful one. It was, I did have a few counselors stop by, but I, it was on a holiday weekend and fairly cold out, so we might learn from that moving forward. But we'll continue to do another one or do the monthly, so every four to six weeks. I want to touch out a couple of Peace River Regional District meetings. We did have a C to C meeting last week or the week before with Dogue River First Nations in Fort St. John. So it was always good to get together with the First Nations and just, yeah, it was, it was a good meeting. I won't get into the details of it, but, yeah. And then Emily Newfeld's Open House, I attended. It was a few Fridays ago. He had an open house there just celebrating the new, well, his new place. So it was, it was good. It was nice to meet him and meet him, see him and his wife and family was there. He's got a new grandchild, which is pretty exciting for him. So, yeah, it was just good to see there was a good turnout. Family Day. Oh, I did have some notes for this, but I don't have them with me. But I just wanted to get to get really give a shout. I'm just going to pull them up here really quick. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the to the city team for the Family Day events. I heard from numerous people, I know we've done them for a few years, but I heard from numerous people how nice it was that our facilities were open on Family Day. It was not too long ago that we were closed for all holidays. So, you know, I think that it's been three or four years that it's changed. But but just a huge shout out because it was one of the main things that I heard. And then you go to the facility. So I was able to go to the arena and, you know, I think it was the attendance at the skate was two hundred and sixty five residents that were there. But it was pretty amazing to walk in there on a holiday, Family Day, and to see that. And then, yeah. And I do got some of the numbers I'll share. So Climbing Wall had fifty eight participants. Public Swim had four hundred and forty eight. Walking Track had sixty. The Laser Tag had ninety four. And the Bouncy Castle had two hundred and forty eight and skating had two hundred and sixty five. So some of the sponsors I wanted to thank. Oventiv for the swimming. Adam Rollick was in attendance. Shell, the climbing, they sponsored the Climbing Wall. They had a representative attendants as well. Birch Cliff did the Bounce Zone. Shriners and Masons did the skating at the Memorial Arena. Also, a thank you to Tim Hortons. Kyle Gillian and their family were there handing out treats and hot chocolate and coffee to all the attendees. So just thank you to them. The city staff, you know, the rec staff, whether it was, you know, at the pool, the Climbing Wall, the arena staff, the maintenance staff, all that helped get it together. Just a huge shout out. And, yeah, probably not, you know, with the change being open on a holiday is, you know, probably different for, you know, some of the city teams lifestyles and different. But to see them down there and and caring and giving and wanting to see the success of the events for our community, it was just great. So and also, thank you to the OVG staff at the Oventiv Event Center for for everything they did and for anybody else that I missed. I don't know if I missed any. I know Ryan and his team, Melissa, were all there. So thank you to everybody, so. Next, seniors meal. So I, I think it was last council meeting or maybe the one before. In one of our draft budgets, we approved the eight thousand dollars to go to the meal call. So I was able to attend. So twice a week, they do a meal call where they go to Rotary Village on one day and then Southview at Rotary Manor one day. So they invited me to one last week and it was phenomenal to go in. So I just wanted to share a little bit for council and just to know what we supported actually with that. But so the eight thousand dollars we give, plus Northern Health is also a contributor of eight thousand. That gives roughly three months of free meals for for both those facilities. So they go in there, they cook lunch and they invite all the residents. There is a fee that the residents have to pay. It's not all free. They do pay a fee. And then they're also left with a meal for dinner for that day as well. So it was phenomenal to see. But the most phenomenal part for me was about community, that it brought, there was about a dozen residents there, but it brought them together in an environment where they live together, but they don't, they don't always get together to do those functions. So it was, yeah, it was way more than supporting the food for them. So it was just to see those residents out of their rooms collaborating together. One lady said to me that it was like, it's what she lives for. And it was like, it really just hit home, like, that's her one thing a week that she lives for and she gets excited about. So it was just, it was really heartwarming to see. And then Anne was there, plus the chef, and they all like volunteer. They help, they clean, they do things like it was a real family feel, like, I just felt very welcome. The other amazing thing that I, they do as well, so when they were at the Rotary or on Tuesday, they were at Rotary Village. For those that, you know, maybe have some difficulties getting to grocery stores and stuff as well, they'll take their grocery lists and go grocery shopping for the residents as well. So that's another feature that they offer. So, yeah, I just wanted to share with with council, just to, because I got to experience what they, what that funds actually goes towards. And and another thing I learned, I'm not going to get into the details of where all their funds come from because And another thing I learned, I'm not going to get into the details of where all their funds come from because that's their business, but it was very. I did ask like, cause we support three months and there's a lot of local community support from industry. Individuals in our community that just do it unannounced, so it was. Yeah, it was just, it was amazing in all aspects, so a huge shout out to them and. Yeah, it was just, it was pretty honoring to sit there beside. You know, beside the residents and it was funny at the end, the one gentleman that was sitting beside me, he looked over at Anne, he's like. Thought the mayor was coming today. It was kind of funny, she's like, he's sitting beside you, oh, so it was, yeah, it was just, it was a great, a great time. Growing the North Conference. I'm gonna, we gotta stop in a bit here, so I'm gonna rush through these if there's any questions at the end, just let me know, but. Growing the North Conference, I was able to attend one day last week, I wanted to thank councillors Sudnick, councillor Kempf and councillor McDonald as well were there in attendance. What a phenomenal conference in the one day I was there, just in all aspects, the speakers, the networking. Yeah, it was just really good, a little bit of jealousy sometimes on how things can operate. In Alberta, somewhere a little bit different, but nonetheless, it was great just to to learn and and to network there, so thank you Toby, that came. Doctors and healthcare. Yeah, besides, yeah, I've had a couple doctor retention recruitment committees. And meetings with Northern Health as well, just continuing. You know, to help them in any aspect, we have another meeting coming up tomorrow on just like a red carpet rollout for. That's kind of what they're calling it, just to help with new doctors and. Really, the the wins we've been seeing from it are are pretty great and it's been very simple things, just building our relationship. Saying thank you to the doctors, welcoming them to our community, so we're just kind of see how we can take that kind of to the next level and grow. It was actually neat, they spoke at the Growing the North Conference from the City of Grand Prairie, so. Took some ideas from that as well that I'll bring up tomorrow, so it was good to hear. Northern Health, I just had a meeting with Northern Health, just they shared. One of the topics they talked to me about was childcare, just that. That it's a struggle in, you know, in Northern Health, most of their communities, they said that. They did bring up that they've had some success in Fort St. John, so I asked, you know, what that meant or what it looked like. So I just was gonna share that with you guys and and the community really, but they've. Made some, there's some, been some partnerships up in Fort St. John with some private healthcare providers or private childcare providers. So that has helped relieve some pressure up there, so I didn't realize that they were. They looked at the the private sector as well, so just something to put out there when we're hearing these conversations or we're talking to. Providers, there's some opportunities, so if you know of somebody that's got a private care or you see something, just let me know and I can connect the parties, so. They also talked about that and then there also was some, I think YMCA has a very significant. Facility up there as well, so it's helped and they've seen a lot of wins in the retention and recruitment in the North piece because of it, so. The Landry Women's Institute was in a few weeks ago to do a proclamation, so I just did it with them in the in the chambers, it was amazing to meet with them. And then one other quick thing, just councillor McDonald and councillor Parslow touched earlier, just maybe sending a letter to the Treaty Eight Tribal Association, so I think that's a great idea, I don't. Know tab in order for us to send a letter to the Treaty Eight Tribal Society, do we need? Recommendation or is that something I can just do?
If you're gonna just do it, you shouldn't have asked her.
Yeah, I guess it. Well, I want to make sure she's happy.
Through your worship. Is the letter coming from yourself or from staff?
I think from mayor and council.
From mayor and council, then a resolution would be appropriate. And further that staff knows what's to be included in the letter.
Okay, and now is a good time for that, or should we?
That would be great.
Okay, councillor Parslow, did you wanna?
Yeah, I would like to move that we, the city council, mayor and council. Approve a letter being sent. To the Treaty Eight. Organization. Expressing our distrust. Around the defacing of their building and what it says about our region and how we, how much we support them.
Thank you councillor Parslow, I have a second, councillor McDonald, any discussion? I will call that motion. Emmanuel, or give you a moment? Okay, did anybody have any questions on any of my updates? Councillor Parslow?
Not so much, well, I guess it leads to a question, like what I, what you said about Family Day. Is right on, I often shook my head, we, we have Family Day, we're closed, you know, for so many family things. And I just wonder because I'm, as you know or know, I believe that family is very important, but I also think cost containment is as well, and I just. Wondered if in our collective agreement, the staff that are required to work on that day are given a day off in lieu? Or must they take compensation for working a stat holiday?
Sir, through your worship, if I remember correctly, the collective agreement states that if you work on a stat, you're going to get paid overtime plus a day in lieu.
Paid overtime.
You're gonna get overtime plus a day in lieu, but that's how I remember it. If you work a stat. But I don't have it in front of me, so.
That how, that's how it is in the private sector as well, if you work a holiday.
So they get, they work the day and they get overtime and they get a day off in lieu. You get both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sorry, just for clarity as well. The sponsorship that was associated for Family Day. Met exceeded all the costs in hosting Family Days, there is no. Impact to the city financials.
Thanks, Ryan. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you worship, I was just gonna make a comment about. Yourself in the regional district going out, doing a council to council with Doig River and. How much I'd like to see ourselves as a council. Get back out there on the road and go out there and do some council to councils as well, I think it'd be great if we could schedule that and. Go out and see our regional partners again.
Yeah, and I think what we did for quite a while, and I think the C to C program, maybe it's something we can look into, but I think it's actually a. I believe it's a grant or a funding that comes with that too, to to help the cost, so. Am I able to call that motion? Okay, I will call the motion, everybody knows what we're voting on. Vote is closed and it's carried. We do have to, Kevin, did you have update?
Yep, I can quickly do that before we have staff sergeant.
I know it's debating whether we take a break or.
It's up to you.
Let's take a break, his report's gonna be longer.
Yeah, we'll actually take a break and then we'll come back in after, thank you.
February twenty fourth back to order, next order business is two point two, we have Staff Sergeant Hughes, Dawson Creek RCMP in attendance. Regarding the detachment resource report for January two thousand and twenty five, so. Welcome Staff Sergeant and good morning for the second time or third time.
Good morning, your worship, thank you for having me. Am I close enough to this? That works, that doesn't move.
I think so, yeah.
All right, again, thank you, your worship, for having me, very happy to be here, Happy New Year to those that I haven't seen. And we'll get right into it. So the policing report for statistics of January twenty twenty five. Our staffing is, we have, for the first time in a while, we have no members that are off duty sick or injured. Our general investigation section has two vacancies and the third one is, she's leaving at the end of April. So we have three out in April and two just graduated this morning, actually, in Regina, so. Very excited to have those two coming, they seem to be excited to come here, happy, happy to be coming to the north, so that's always a good thing. Where are we at? So we do have some internal transfers to fill those general investigation section, we can't leave that vacant. The corporal up there, Corporal Casey Charles is doing a fantastic job of managing the resources that he has. With what's been going on here this year so far. So our total calls for service for the year are at six hundred and fifty four, which is down from six hundred and eighty two. So not a, not a huge change, five, five percent decrease in calls for service and that seems to be all in the rural and Pouscoopy. Areas with, that's where the differential is coming from. So our crime trends, again, the crime trends for January. It's, it's a little bit difficult to speak to the reds and the greens. With the increases and decreases just being that it's year to date and it's only a one month capture, so the numbers, the closer we get to the end of the year, the. The better, bigger picture that we get. Because we get some huge percentage increases with fairly small numbers, theft of vehicles. Is a decrease of sixteen percent, but it's down to from ten to, or from twelve to ten. Our theft from vehicle, an increase of thirty three percent, but it's only, it's a difference of one, so. That theft from vehicle is a fantastic stat, being down that low, we like to see that, especially around the holidays and when it's, when it's winter. Means people are locking their vehicles and our patrols, our citizens on patrols and our citizen, different citizen groups that are out. Keeping an eye on our community as well as our police officers. January saw a huge response from. A number of our police agency partners that I'll get to here at the end, but those police officers floating around town. Fully overt and and flying the flag, if you will, made a huge big difference to stuff like that, so our break and enter to residents. Went from seven to three, a decrease of fifty seven percent. Break and enter to businesses went from six to one. Down five files, our assaults. And everything that assaults, all our violent offenses are up five. And that five is, that whole spike is due to the files from January seventeen, eighteen and nineteenth that wrapped up on the twentieth, so we'll speak to those. Near the end, but that, nearly that whole increase is is due to those three or four days. Our sexual assaults at all, which is all of, anything that has a sexual offense to it, is up from three to five, so shows a sixty seven percent increase, which is. Alarming when you're talking about sexual offenses and I don't ever want to say, but it's only two, because ideally those numbers should be zero. I will never be happy until those are zero and the community or shouldn't be happy until those are zeros. We're working on getting it there, it's. The sexual offenses are also. We want people to become more comfortable coming to the police, there's always that piece of, you know, there's the shame or the guilt and they don't want to come to the police. We want people to come to us to report those files, so as much as we want those numbers to be zero. Realistically speaking, they're probably never going to be, that's just not the world that we live in, so having people, knowing that people are comfortable to come to us and report them. It is good for the community. Drug possession and drug trafficking is up a hundred percent, but it's only the difference of one and that number, I expect that number to continue to rise as, again, we spoke before. With the, the public being more comfortable and calling us and retraining as decriminalization has changed. Our new corporal again, I can't speak enough praises about him, Corporal Casey Charles, he's been working with, you know. He should have three constables up there and he's been working with one or none for a long time. He's been writing search warrants and seizing drugs and charging criminals with drug, drug offenses. Some of these won't show up until later, later in the year when the charges are actually approved, but he's working on those with the team that he has and just doing an amazing job. Our impaired driving has gone from six to, six to fourteen, which is up a hundred and thirty three percent, and again, this is the work, we have. A couple of members over at the detachment in the frontline policing general duty that are aspiring to. Traffic, a future in traffic, BC Highway Patrol, so they are really, really stepping up their game and targeting those. Those drunk drivers and their efforts are showing, so very much appreciation to those members that are doing that. And then that also, I can only guess that it's having an effect on our collisions, they're down eleven. Sorry, they are down one, not eleven. But down one is good, anybody that's driven Dawson Creek or driven to the border or driven to Fort St. John knows. The quality of our drivers on the roads are not increasing, so any decrease there is a win, I think. Our theft, including shoplifting, so this thefts, thefts of all type of theft other than theft from vehicle are up only four, which is. Which is good, again, we'd, we'd like a decrease there, but we'll take that as a win. Our mental health files, and these again are every file, any file that has a mental health component to it. They are sitting flat at fifty one. And our unspecified assistance files, this number didn't sit right with me, so I just did a check. Back with the office while I was out front and it was ninety seven last year and eighty nine this year, so it's not a decrease of eighty four percent. And I'm not going to pretend that I can do that math in my head, but it's somewhere around ten percent. But still a decrease, so those unspecified assistance, I will speak over and over again. Those are the files that people are calling us, there's somebody walking down the back alley or there's, you know, somebody riding through a parking lot with a backpack, those suspicious person calls. While it's not a criminal offense, we do appreciate those calls because it gets the police cars into the neighborhoods. And flying the flag. So our new tracking measures, these started in December of twenty twenty four, so there won't, there won't be a comparable year to date. Files recorded for January for any, any files involving anyone unhoused. Is twenty two files for the month, so al- almost one a day that our members are dealing with. And a lot of times those are, you know, two and three member responses just because of the nature of the call. But twenty, we're at twenty two for the, for the month of January, so we'll continue to build that stat and then we'll have comparables. Moving forward, but that'll take a little, take a little bit of time for the stat to. To give it something to compare against. Our citizens on patrol, I continue to go to the meetings when I can, there's South East Crime Prevention. COPS, Rural Crime Watch. Crime Stoppers. All fantastic initiatives, I think the, for twenty twenty four, the, went to the Tom's Lake Annual, their AGM. And there, I think we're just so close, ten thousand kilometers patrols that that group did, so fantastic work by our citizens. These are just volunteers that are out just doing the right thing, I, I can't express my thanks enough for the people that just volunteer their own time, their own gas. They're away from their families when, you know, in those evening hours when that's when we all want to be home. And we have citizens out there just out to do the right thing and it shows. So very much extended appreciation for those people that are doing that. Our violence suppression efforts, so we continue on with the Violence Suppression Team Overtime Initiative in Dawson Creek. With our members, so that is an initiative that we started last year, where two uniform members in a marked police car go out and specifically target our. Are, are offending people, people that are on probation, people with conditions, people with curfews, people with warrants. And checking, you know, where, where people are and it's, it's twofold, it's developing the members that have. A desire to do that further along, further along in their career. Seeing the Uniform Gang Enforcement Team and the Emergency Response Team people in town. Sparks those interests with a lot of our younger members and it's just, it's been a great initiative, it's, it's working very well. One thing I did miss back here is with the Citizen on Patrol Corporal Eitenbosch, came to us last year, he's been here about a year now. And he has, the meetings that I can't get to, he has, he's volunteering and going to those meetings whenever he can, so just wanted to shout out to him and thank you for that. And then we're going to get to, just gonna speak a little bit because I know that everybody wants to know. The files for January seventeen, eighteen and nineteen here where we had, there was two homes that were shot at on two, two separate nights. There was, one of our police officers was shot at on the second event and then we had a murder on the nineteenth, just before, just before midnight on the twentieth. And then there was an attempted murder moments later. So what we did, again, one of the benefits of, you know, being RCMP is we had. Twenty, twenty five members here, the Uniform Gang Enforcement Team, we reached out to them and I said before, in some of the recent. Last year's reports that those resources were there for us immediately if we needed them. And they were, as soon as those shootings happened, we were on the phone with North District, we had their full support, we had E Division's full support. And those Uniform Gang Enforcement Team members were on a plane flying to Fort St. John, Fort St. John gave up a. Complement of their vehicles to supplement our, some extra vehicles that we gave the team and they were on the road in less than twenty four hours. And targeting all. And they were on the road in less than twenty-four hours and targeting all of all of the people that were involved in those in those files. And it proved very valuable on the night of the nineteenth, when when the murder happened here. So excuse me if I jump around a little bit, there's, there's a lot going on on those three days. I'm just trying to put it together in a timeline the best I can, your worship. Those took place, the murder took place. I got the call at home just after midnight. Sergeant Peddle came in at midnight to just before three o'clock in the morning. He went home, got some sleep. I came in at three o'clock and took over for him as local command. And we had the list of teams, I've got it listed here. We had Prince George Combined Forces Special Enforcement Unit, which we call C F S U. Prince George Major Crime, E Division Major Crime of Green Timbers and Surrey. They they had people on a plane on their way up here within twenty-four hours. North District Regional General Investigation Section, both Dawson Creek and Fort St. John Highway Patrol members came. We had North District Emergency Response Team. Uniform Gang Enforcement Team was already here. North District Forensic Identification Section came down from Fort St. John and they had everybody that they had available here. We had resources come from Vanrethoff R C M P, Grand Prairie R C M P, North, North District Police Dog Services. And then I special shout out to the North District Operational Communication Center. And these are dispatchers and call takers that are navigating all this stuff when it's coming through. And it's one thing to be a police officer on the ground and listening to all this come through the radio and having to deal with it and get to where you got to be. And when everybody else is running one way, we are running to it. But the dispatchers and the call takers that are keeping their composure when stuff like this is going and people are like literally screaming into the phone, somebody's been murdered. And the work that they do to support us and get us the information that they do is just absolutely outstanding. So just a big shout out to them. And then the people that I forgot on this list, our closest neighbors, Chatwin and Tumblr R C M P. I didn't write them on the list here, so I do apologize for that. But they were very quick to send send bodies and resources up to to assist. So all in all, we had, I went up to a briefing the next morning and there was twenty people just in that briefing. And that's the general investigation, serious crime people. And then that doesn't include all the people we had at scene security, all our frontline people on the road. E R T, the Emergency Response Team out of Prince George was on the road. Uniform Gang, we had, I would say, close to a hundred cops here in town, almost, almost immediately. And the word, I don't like to use the word on the street, but the but the word on the street. Just before the Uniform Gang Enforcement Team left, when they were talking with with our knowns, the the wording that kept coming up was, everybody is, and I don't like air quotes either, but everybody was rolling clean is what was what was being told to the U G members. There's so many of you here, nobody, like, nobody is, nobody's stepping on a line. Everybody's just sitting at home and and they kept using this term rolling clean, which I'll let you interpret yourself. So all of that to say, what a fantastic effort. Joint effort by Dawson Creek, all of our local detachments, all of Support Sections, North District, E Division, everybody. To get to get a murder charge laid in less than a week is just absolutely, absolutely amazing. I know that the community and the communities across the country are get frustrated with different legislation pieces. Regina versus Jordan with the Jordan Rule, we call it, and the delay of charges. And the investigational steps that need to take, need to happen before we can lay, before we charge us to Crown. For how to have this file wrapped so tightly, so quickly with so many resources is just amazing work. And then I do, the last thing I want to talk about, kind of in the middle of all this, the second shooting that we had. They shot it, they shot up the house. We got a description of the vehicle and it was the same, same description of this of the vehicle from the night before that had shot at a home. So our members got in a pursuit with that vehicle and the occupants of that vehicle shot at our member. And a twelve gauge slug came through the windshield of the police car and missed the best we can figure by inches. Broken glass and pieces of lead behind, behind the member in in the seat and broke two holes in the in the barrier in the police car right, right behind the member. So these, that's not what we sign up for. People say, you know, social media is is horrible for this and, you know, you signed up for that. No police officer signs up to be murdered. We sign up to protect the community. So thank God that the member is uninjured. We, as a detachment, as a district, as a force nationally, are doing everything we can to support that member. He is back at work. He's doing, doing very well. But the support for something like that is is not a, it's not a pat on the back, it's not a hug. It's it's years and years and years of cause and effect for him. So just to speak to the, to the risks that we go through every day. You know, that's kind of stuff doesn't happen every day, but this is an eye opener that it is a reality and it does happen. So horrible, horrible place to be in as a detachment commander, to think of one of my members having to go through that. But everybody's on our end is okay and I couldn't be any more thankful for all the help and support. And that goes right back, your worship, to Mayor Council and the support that we get from you all. And yeah, I don't know. It's it's an amazing place to be, Dawson Creek, the what it's become over the last few years. I think we're heading in the right direction and we're still heading in that right direction. And there's no plan to let off the gas anytime soon. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Staff Sergeant. Just before it opened up to everybody here, I just want to, you touched on so much there. And yeah, I mean, out of all of this curing from our end when there was an officer shot at, like, it just hit home, like, on how much, yeah, on how wrong that is, right? In so many ways and, you know, obviously extremely grateful that he wasn't injured and is back. But yeah, we're definitely with you and, you know, you touched on so many things over the last couple of years that, you know, how things have progressed in such a positive way. And then we have this little blip, but I, you know, you definitely hear it from the community and feel it that it's, you know, been a safer place. And yeah, and I mean, to see how fast your team acted too, like, on all this and getting charges. And yeah, we're just so grateful for for the team that you have next door and for all the support you received throughout the province. And, you know, through Grand Prairie and Alberta as well. You know, we're grateful for that, but we're also grateful for you, Staff Sergeant, Sergeant Peddle. You two are, you know, are true humble leaders that, you know, you lead and you, you know, you put self, others before yourself. And yeah, we're grateful for you. So appreciate what you've done for for the community and how much you've embraced our community in lots of ways. So yeah, just very grateful and just want to thank you and your whole leadership team. Like, I know we've been over there and thanked the members, but yeah, we appreciate you, yourself and your leadership team too. So thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I don't think we're ever going to, we're not going to stop this type of thing from happening completely. But the reaction, the reaction time has gone from like last November twenty twenty-three. It took a couple of weeks to get everything in in place and this took a couple of hours. So just seeing that progression and going from what it was to what it is 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 fantastic. And again, your worship, thank you very much for the for the kind words. Again, I will, I've said it before, I'll say it again. Sergeant Peddle and myself, we steer the ship and the team over there rows it. So if they stop, if they stop rowing, I don't have a ship to steer and neither does Sergeant Peddle, so.
Yeah. Somebody's computer's got something going on.
Not mine.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, the only other thing that I was going to speak about that I forgot to mention was that every member now in Dawson Creek is equipped, equipped with a body cam. So maybe just open up for questions when we get to that about them. Everybody's wearing them. Green is is not recording. When we're recording, this flash is red. Anybody, the general public, and if you Google, search R C M P B W C for body worn cam policy. So R C M P B W C policy, anybody can go right into our policy and read it. And that explains when we record, when we aren't allowed to record. It's very, very easy to understand, so.
Excellent.
That was the last thing I had.
Thank you. How's the team about wearing those? Are they all excited about having them?
They're very excited about wearing it. We've already got feedback from a couple of the members where they they have gone and had confrontations with people. And the members got got it on since they'd like to remind you that you're being audio and video recorded body worn camera. And it just shuts it down so fast. So it's good. And it's it's for the public protection and our protection. And it's just a fantastic tool. There's no more, there's no more gray area. It's, you know, a picture tells a thousand words, what does a video tell? And the nice thing about these, these cameras is they're always looping, so they're always recording. So if I was to turn my camera on right now, it would capture the thirty seconds before and add it to the video, but video only. It doesn't, it doesn't loop the audio. So the camera turns on the audio and so if I turn it on right now for three seconds and turn it back off, it would, it would capture a thirty-three second video. Three of it would have the sound and the preceding thirty seconds would only have video. But just what a fantastic tool.
Such a benefit, no win from like technology advancing, right? So.
Yeah, it does some, it does some amazing things. It links to our phones, takes statements, they auto transcribe, take photographs, upload them to the digital evidence management system. We call it D M S, which links with Crown Council. It's fantastic.
Will save you a lot of time on the admin side to to be out there doing what you.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Yeah, you're welcome. Counselor Earl.
Thank you, worship, and yeah, very exciting. So yeah, just to, I guess, echo the sentiment expressed by the mayor that you touched on. Obviously, I think we've made progress. It's not always linear, unfortunately, when you have these kind of flare ups and people's lives are put at risk. It's not, not a happy thing. And to see the community highlighted or featured in that light as a representative of the public is is never pleasant. But I'd say if there was one silver lining in this entire thing, it it has, was the response of law enforcement. And to the extent that it, you know, bolstered, I think, the community's confidence that, you know, bad things are going to happen. But as you noted, we we have a lot more of a handle on it seemingly than we once did. So yeah, kudos to you guys on that. And obviously, the nature of what happened drives home the risks you take upon yourselves in doing your job. So we certainly appreciate that. I guess one question, as we look at the beginning of the year stats and now that the weather is warming, as we're aware, in in here in the sub-Arctic, every winter, we kind of get a bit of a reprieve and a hard reset on some of the nuisance crimes, crimes of opportunity, petty theft, as the temperature kind of prohibits some of the worst, the worst of it. As we head into the spring and warmer weather, what can we do to support you as those crimes will likely inevitably begin to tick up? What would you like to see? What's, how can we work together to deter people who might be inclined to get back into their summer lurking habits?
Thank you, through your worship. Honestly, the the support that council has for us has been fantastic and that that goes a long ways. As far as what can council do, support, just continuing support, supporting our Crime Stoppers and C O P S, Rural Crime Watch, those groups. Any kind of media distribution that you that you can do would be fantastic. We were talking this morning about Crime Stoppers and just trying to get, how do we get the general public to bring information forward? The last, at the last C O P S meeting, I can't remember the stat, it was, it was quite high. Counselor McDonald will be able to speak to it. The amount of people that are calling into Crime Stoppers and giving tips and crimes that are getting solved and they don't want the reward, they're just trying to do the right thing is amazing. Getting Crime Stoppers a little more public and maybe having the city not bolster it, but for lack of a better term, bolster or promote it would probably help. The thing with Crime Stoppers, we can't as the police, we can't write a search warrant on anonymous information. There's a lot of information that comes through that we can't act on. So having the public know that, we still want the information. Crime Stoppers is an incredibly valuable tool and having that, having that out there, having the city of Dawson Creek promote that would probably be, probably my number one ask to get that, just get that out there. I don't know how many people think now, what do you mean, is Crime Stoppers still a thing?
Yeah.
And it definitely is a thing, so. Information, it's it's the age of information. Everything, everything's virtual, everything's digital, body cams, internet. How many meetings do we have on Teams meeting? Having actual face-to-face meeting like this are becoming more far and few between. So just the promotion of of our programs and stuff is is what I would ask for. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Earl. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, worship. Building on what Counselor Earl was saying there about possible support that we can give. I was wondering about media support over the impaired driving numbers. Great to hear your members are concentrating on that, but wondering if we could assist you by doing a blitz about not drinking and driving, condoning it, et cetera. I was wondering if we could aid in that way. But I also wanted to just say thank you to a specific member, Constable LeGrand, for her participation with the Crime Prevention Education Session we did with seniors in regards to scams and how well received she was in her presentation and what a great benefit it was to have her there. So thank you very much for your detachment committing to the community and going out of their way and giving of their personal time to come and help us. So thank you so very much for that. We really appreciate it. And then I just wanted to share my voice with his worship in saying thank you for what an amazing job your detachment specifically did during a very hard week. There was the social media video going around where they came across the two people sleeping in their truck. And act in such an amazing professional manner after having a peer being fired upon, but still to be able to deescalate such a tough situation with a firearm present. It it showed what an amazing group we have here in our community to act in such a great professional manner. Thank you. Congratulations to your team.
Through your worship, thank you very much. Very much appreciated. Going through your list, to assist with a blitz, the city has already contributed, maybe some don't know. But one of the tribes, the B C Highway Patrol members, Constable Burton, is working with MAD. And the city has already authorized the permits to put those signs up. So things like that, those those things help. And any, always again, like the age of technology and communication, any, any kind of blitzes through the media are always going to help. So definitely, definitely that will help. Constable LeGrand is one of our, she's our newest member. So I love to hear the feedback about our our younger members, our newer members, just integrating with the community and doing little projects like that. A little project for us is a huge product, product or project for the senior community. So very grateful to hear that feedback. Thank you very much. And then as far as the the two people in the truck with the gun, just something I'd like to touch on with that is, it came out on social media that it was, it was a replica firearm. But again, we don't, we don't know that. And there's no way for us to tell if it's a replica firearm. And our number one job is public safety. So ha- having, we're not, we're not going to wait and find out if that's, if it's a replica firearm. So if there's a public message that I can put out through this, is replica firearms hold the same threat as a real firearm? Until such time, they're proven to be not a real firearm. So thank you for bringing that up. It's just, especially with what's gone on here, replica firearms pose an incredible risk and danger to every community in the country. And anybody that wants to have a look at it, they can look at the Criminal Code and whether a firearm is real or not. If you use an imitation firearm in the Commission of Offense and the person that is victimized believes it to be a real firearm, the sentencing and the charge is the same whether it's a replica firearm or a real firearm. So the Criminal Code lays that out. So the criminal code lays that out, uh, takes the guesswork out of it for anybody that wants to have a read of it. So I, through your worship, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I just want to talk about three things. First of all, it's, it's nice to be able to say I support everything that's been said by my fellow elected officials here about the RCMP. So it's nice being to support my colleagues. The big frustration, I'm going to say nearly everyone has, um, and must be intensely felt by the RCMP members who, in their work, is what is referred as the catch and release regime that seems to be present. Now, th- these three days of high activity and great support from the, the members who have different functions in different places when they came here, and I may need to be corrected on this, but my impression is that one, um, person that was arrested, um, for something quite serious, um, that many, I think, would consider this person to be a danger to the community, was released after appearing in court. And I'm just left wondering what can, what would be the reasons when somebody who's engaged in, um, behaviors that are violent, that would cause them not to be retained? Um, I mean, I really don't know too much about the law in this regard, but I'm just also wondering what we as elected politicians can do to, to do our part in trying to get, after all the due diligence and work of our RCMP or other police forces, wherever they be, that these people who common sense would seem that they are prone to violence, maybe they don't, can't regulate their behavior that well because of other reasons, but they really should be retained, um, until, uh, there's been some medical examination or there's, their case has been heard in a more thorough way. But my understanding, again, only from media stuff, which is very limited in this town, arrest was made, within a few hours, they were back on the streets. And I just get frustrated at many levels, right? For you guys, but for the community's safety as well, well, so what more can happen to, to get politicians or to amend whatever legislation? That's, that's a, I'm just venting a frustration, but I'm just wondering what can be done to kickstart some resolution to this legal thing? I think people are very clear that you guys have done your job, but you're not getting the support from the judicial system.
Thank you, um, through your worship. There's a lot of information there, Counselor Parslow. Well, I'll go through, uh, most of it, uh, I'll start by saying thank you for your support. It, it means a lot. As far as the catch and release piece goes, it's very difficult for me as a detachment commander in the RCMP or any RCMP officer, member to speak about the catch and release process. What goes on at the courthouse? I'm not a judge. I would never want to be a judge and I, uh, if I was a betting man, I would probably bet that no judge wants to be sitting in my chair. So we do our job and they do their job. So I'm not, I'm not going to speak negatively about how, how the court, how, how the court handles things, how Crown Council handles things. They have different thresholds than we have. We have grounds for arresting people, then we have grounds for forwarding charges to Crown. Crown has their own threshold, whether or not they approve a charge. And then the judges have thresholds based on the current legislation that they're bound by, uh, different bills, um, different pieces of legislation. I would never want to, I would never want to be put in their place to have to make those decisions. So, um, our job as the police are to investigate and put those packages before Crown. Crown has their mandate and the, and the judicial system takes care of things that they have to do. I know that it's frustrating for the public. It's equally frustrating for us, uh, as police to put somebody in jail and see, have them be released. There's diff, again, there's different processes and different pieces of legislation, um, provincially and federally that allow for that or have created a situation where that happens. So in your question of, you know, what can council do, um, you know, you, you spoke of politicians and how to amend legislation is, is reaching out to your public safety minister, um, you know, individually or as a whole mayor and council and coming up with a package, speaking, speaking about specifics that you, when you have the information of specifics is, I would think is going to go further than speaking in general, um, specific, specific cases and bringing that information to them. The more information that you bring forward, especially as mayor and council, if you are speaking as mayor and council, you're speaking for thousands and thousands of people, whereas if you speak as an individual, you're speaking as one person. So the frustration is there. It doesn't fall on deaf ears. My recommendation, uh, to answer the question would be to reach out to Minister of Public Safety and, and go that, go that route. Try and get legislation changed. The RCMP, we don't, we don't make the laws. We, we enforce them and educate. So hopefully that answers your question.
No, it's well said. So the question then, I, I appreciate also the fact that specifics being brought to the attention of the solicitor general, right? Is that, that's probably the minister for public safety, right? So can you play a role in providing specifics? How does a council get specific information that it might use? Obviously with nameless, nameless, obviously to protect the individual, but how does one access specific examples to bring before or use in any presentation? Because this is a real issue for many, many people across all parties, right? I believe. So is, is there, is there a place you go to? Is, uh, where do you get the specific information?
I can speak a little bit to what we've done already because we've met with the Attorney General on Solicitor for Public Safety numerous times and it's.
I'm talking about the case we just had, you know what I mean? As an example.
Oh, like the current, like the one where there's been charges?
Yeah, they were released.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, the ones when we've met with before, when Kevin and I flew down there, it was the same thing. We had all those packages with us and all the cases that they've dealt with and this is what's happened.
From the RCMP?
Yeah. Multiple avenues, but the RCMP is one, but yeah.
So through your worship, um, there was some bad information that came out on social media and I'm not entirely sure, Counselar Parslow, which case you're talking about. And I do, you know, appreciate the forum that we're in and the names probably shouldn't be used. But I can, what I can say is I did see bad information on Facebook. The person that's responsible for the murder and the attempted murder are in jail and they are not going anywhere for a while. The person that we believe is responsible for shooting at the police is still in jail and I don't believe they're going anywhere for a while. There was rumor that both of those people were released and that is absolutely not the case. There is a third person that was alleged to be involved at the initiation of, uh, the murder investigation. They were subsequent, subsequently released and they are now back in jail on other offenses that occurred that same night and they are in custody. So the three main, we'll call them players, um, involved in those files, those nights are all in custody. The two violent offenders, the most violent offenders were never released. So if you're, if there's, if there's another case in there.
No, you, you're, you're dealing with the right cases.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So that's my final point then. If I, I said.
You said three.
Three points. I had a supplementary on the second point.
I've counted like five or six.
Your presentation about the camera system was interesting about all the efficiencies and stuff. So that led to, so am I, are we looking forward to some, to some reduction in office staff costs through all the efficiencies of this camera? That's my last question.
Thank you, uh, through your worship. No, actually you won't be looking forward to any reduction in office staff because while it, the amount of information and intelligence that comes through the camera, the, the, just the data is in the millions of pieces of data. So we did our training here February 27th, 28th, um, sorry, January 27th. We're not at February 27th, 28th yet.
Wow. Impressive.
So yeah, we're training in the future, we're training in the future now. This is the, the way of the, the new process. So we, we've been trained for about a month now and the pieces of data in the body worn camera, uh, digital evidence management system was expected to be at a million by now. A million pieces of data, and that's not the whole province. There's, this is just the first wave of, of, uh, RCMP detachments that have the cameras. We only have 31 members here. Four St. John, Tumblr, uh, Chatwin are all on that same, same wave of training. But the amount of data that it creates, that it, for us to assist, so every time we do a Crown Council report now for an in custody, Crown Council wants all, all of this data downloaded and sent off in the first instance. So on not in custody files, all the, all the digital evidence goes, gets uploaded and E-division is actually taking care of that. All the redaction, all the, those transcripts, that's all done at E-division, um, taken care of by the province. So, uh, there is a ton more evidence now being collected with the same amount of people. So your value for your dollar is actually increased with the body worn cameras, but I can, uh, say without a doubt that we will, shall not be reducing our staff over there. Thank you, your worship.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselar Parslow. Counselor Apollonio?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, Sergeant George, I just echoing all the thanks, the thank yous. Actually, I even know, I know, or we know that we started the year with a big and challenging way, but after that, we're good. Actually, we're coming from a community, from the community. We are thankful, they are thankful that, yeah, we are peace and quiet lately. So, and nice to hear that because sometimes, you know, every time that you will approach people, ask questions, ask questions, and then of course, social media plus those things. And then like recently, I just, they're just saying thank you. They are, they are confident, they are more secured and safe. So yeah, just echoing those, uh, from, from the community, thank you. And I think your leadership is doing good because as a testimony, I was in a McDonald's store the, the other night, I'm with my friends and good thing that, uh, an unhoused individual approached us, approached me, maybe begging or something or asking for, you know, and good thing that I have coupons and I gave them, I gave him and, and incidentally during the time your RCMP group were, were there during a break. So, and I think they saw the interaction between us, but, but we're good. Don't get me wrong. But after that, when, after the break, they approached the unhoused individual and they think, they approached him properly, professionally, nothing, you know, nothing to be aggressive, something that, so I think that reflects your, your leadership or the present RCMP right now. So, and maybe that's why, like Counselor McDonald said, uh, the said video, the, the way they approach things is really positive and more productive. So just echoing those things.
Thank you, through your worship. Thank you very much. That's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Apollonio. Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come over here and presenting and yeah, and then thank you to yourself and your team. We appreciate it.
Thank you, your worship. It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Same here. Enjoy the rest of your, your day.
You as well. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we were just gonna call a break and then we're gonna go into committee of the whole. So I'm just gonna take like a one minute break. For those that are watching, we'll be back into our regular council meeting probably around 1:30 or 2 o'clock. So.
February 24th to order, um, first order business, two delegations, 2.1, Dan Casey, is present with the transportation, is the transportation consultant for, with urban systems regarding on-demand transit feasibility studies. So welcome, Dan, and sorry about our bit of delay at the beginning and then also our technical difficulties, but we're here now and hopefully you can hear us and the floor is all yours.
Great, loud and clear and hey, not to worry about the delay whatsoever. So I'm gonna share my screen here and just walk the group through a, um, a 10 minute or so presentation just to get everyone oriented with the on-demand transit feasibility study and some of our key findings. So, um, yeah, thank you everyone again for, um, having me here. I was, uh, in front of council back in, I think it was October and we had a nice working session on sort of earlier in the stages of this, um, project and really did help us kind of, uh, proceed along a path that, um, reflected the conversation with council and get us to a kind of a draft study where we feel like we've, uh, met some of those key objectives that we spoke about. So a bit of background, um, this project was undertaken to assess, uh, current transportation options within your community and specifically the current approach to provision of public transit, really through the lens of identifying the opportunities related to on-demand transit service options. This includes, uh, the potential for both, um, uh, service parameters as well as profitable costs that might come with an on-demand service, uh, for transit. And really we were trying to determine if on-demand transit was a good solution for your community, either as a possible enhancement to the current public transit, uh, service provision or as a replacement for that current service. We went through a generally a four-phase process. We begun early in the fall of 2024, about six months ago, started up with a startup, um, phase and technical review. Through the fall, we held a series of, uh, community conversations that included the working session, uh, with, in person with council. Later in the fall, early winter, we started developing up what on-demand service concepts could be, including, uh, analysis to understand feasibility for each. And then we're here early in 2025, looking to, uh, first draft and then finalize the, um, summary report and the recommendations contained within. So a bit of a recap on the current state of your public transit system, and this will be recap, recap for the group, but you've got two routes that operate, um, sort of in, generally in the northern and southern halves of the city. Services offered from about 7:20 AM through just after 5 PM on weekdays. Also notable and sort of, um, quite, um, specific to your community when we start looking at this system in Dawson Creek relative to other systems and comparable communities around the province, is this midday weekday gap that occurs generally from around 10 to, uh, 1 or, or 2 PM. Also noting that service is not provided into the evening nor on the weekends.
Weekend gaps, are those weekday gaps as well?
So the service, the get, the time slots that have been identified there, that's slightly different for the two routes, but generally from 10 AM till, till 1 or 2 PM. That's on weekdays. And then also noting the entire weekend is a gap as well. Yeah. 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 Good clarification. Yeah. Some information on ridership. So, um, I guess the graph on the right is showing a five-year trend. We know that service was pulled back quite significantly and I believe it was 2018 into 2019. And so we saw sort of a corresponding dip in ridership. I guess more, I guess also importantly, during that time, a pandemic hit. And so, um, across all communities, transit trends really did shift quite dramatically. But we have been seeing a more positive trend in recent years. We're seeing ridership approaching, uh, levels that it was, uh, prior to the service reductions, uh, six, seven years ago. I think it was 73,000 trips, uh, made in, in 2023. And some key figures relative to system performance. We know the annual operating cost, uh, is about $800,000. The city's cost, um, uh, contribution toward that is a little under half. We know fare revenues are about $90,000 per year. This is sort of for last year fiscal. Uh, and then we know your fleet consists of three buses and provides a little over 3,000 service hours, um, per year. The figures on the screen in front of us are results from a survey that was, uh, carried out as part of the, the transportation master plan, uh, earlier in, well, the fall of 2024. And there was, um, there were a couple of questions, but this was one of them very specific to public transit and taking the bus. And so wanted to sort of, um, highlight some of the outcomes from this question as it's directly relevant to the work we're doing here. So the question was asked, uh, what factors discourage you from taking the bus? And some of the key pieces of feedback really do help sort of, uh, articulate some of the challenges with the current system and, and, and a frame of reference, so to speak, for the on-demand transit feasibility work we're doing here. So, um, key responses were bus service is infrequent. Traveling by bus is not as flexible or as convenient as alternatives like driving. Buses don't go where I need to go or buses don't go to my neighborhood. And so really starting to provide and start to frame up some of the challenges with the current system. And then just some, some of the key considerations, we believe through our technical work plus some of the conversations we had with the community, that the weekday midday gap, that sort of ten to one or ten to two gap really is sort of the most challenging part of the current system. It makes two way trip making quite challenging, whether it's making a morning trip and not being able to get back midday or seeking a midday trip and, and not actually being able to access the service. It makes it really challenging to rely on public transit as a day to day primary travel option. We also heard the lack of evening service and lack of week, of weekend services are also key challenges to more people relying on the service. Couple other key pieces, we learned that the trips, the, the school routes in the morning and in the afternoon really are driving ridership in your community. They, they comprise a large portion of the total trips that are made. And, and sort of correspondingly, we're seeing the non school runs. Those buses are relatively, experiencing relatively low ridership. And so we've got this kind of dichotomy of really heavy usage and at or near capacity for these school runs. And then very much the opposite for most other runs.
And do you know, do you have the numbers on that? You said a significant amount to those seventy two thousand or do you know what roughly the number is?
We don't have perfect numbers, unfortunately. We, we, there's no system that's in place of counting rider type or even on specific routes or runs during the course of the day. What we do have is monthly trends. I don't have them in this slide deck, but we do have that information. It does paint quite a picture where you see ridership dip down quite significantly through July and August and somewhat through June as well, which is, we believe is sort of a direct relation to that, that student ridership not being there during those months.
Significant, that's educated somewhat then, besides having hard numbers, it's.
It, it's both of that, the monthly trend, plus we've observed those school runs and they're, they're at or very near capacity. And we're observing other runs that are not related to, they're well outside of school bell times. You're seeing significantly reduced ridership. Yeah.
Just to speak to that, Dan, I've been working with BC Transit on getting that data gap. So in the next few months, I just spoke with them last week when they were up. We're gonna try to capture that data so we have a good number for the school students.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
Great, great idea, yeah, yeah. Okay, and then the last item I wanted to touch on here is just the importance and significance of the step up and ride service that's in place in your community. A figure there on the screen from, from twenty twenty three, it's, it's providing over half of the total number of trips that the public transit system is providing. And I think we heard a fair bit, both from the service providers themselves as well as the people that utilize the service, that it would be a significant loss and a real gap in, in transportation options in your community if it didn't operate in future. Okay, so shifting gears just a little bit into sort of some of the work we did around the potential for on demand transit options in your community. So what is on demand transit? I think we covered this a little bit last time, but just to, I'm kind of refreshed for the group. It's a request based service, so we're conventional service. The fixed route service you have in place runs on a, a schedule and it's consistent. On demand is more of a request based service that utilizes dynamic dispatch and technology, typically app based. You can also have telephone call in options as well. But it's typically app based and it's a dynamic system that responds to riders' needs. So instead of circulating on fixed routes, it's more responsive to when people and, and where people want, want trips. There's a series of options that doesn't have to look the same in every community, but generally speaking, some of the key service parameters or options for on demand is that it can operate on either a fixed route or a varied route. So it can either operate on the same, similar to a conventional service or it can deviate from route and sort of be more responsive to exactly the trip making, making patterns that are being requested. And it may utilize other fixed bus stops, just like you have in place in your community now and or virtual bus stop locations. And so it can be more responsive to exactly where people are trying to go to and, and from. Through that lens, it provides a greater level of flexibility than a conventional fixed route service and can be beneficial particularly for those that benefit from this sort of more flexible drop and pickup or curb to curb service that isn't necessarily provided with fixed route. And where we see on demand transit applied and, and, and makes sense is generally in areas of lower ridership, often more outlying or rural communities and or where transit demand, the, the demand for, for trips varies over the course of a day or over different days of the week where we see fluctuation in that demand. And so in terms of sort of how this might apply in Dawson Creek, it does start to check a few of those boxes in terms of relatively lower ridership. And we see some pretty good variation between the different routes over the course of a day. So I guess the good news is that we have a, a recent example of a pilot project of on demand transit service in the Crawford neighborhood in Kelowna. This service was put into place, I believe it was earlier in the spring of twenty twenty four. And so we've now got the ability to sort of better understand what that service provision might look like and how it's been sort of, its performance level and how it's been received in the pilot that was, that was done in Crawford. So this is the first such system that's been put in place within the BC transit, transit system. It operates parallel to the continuation of a fixed route service that's used to serve student trip making. So actually potentially a very good comparison to Dawson Creek from that perspective is there's still fixed service in place for those high ridership student runs. But then it reverts to on demand service through, for this community throughout the rest of the day. And then what it does is that you can kind of see the map on the right hand side, but it's quite a sort of a suburban sort of road network and, and land use typology. And so what it does is it circulates through this neighborhood and then distributes riders to the mission exchange, which then allows people to transfer on to some of the other higher frequency fixed route service to get where it is they need to go. And so determined to be a very good solution for this particular community. It uses technology, uses an app that's set up very specific for this service in this, in this neighborhood. And it uses both a kind, like a combination of the existing bus stops that are in place from previous service as well as a series of new virtual stops, which really just means they're digitally tagged and they're an opportunity rather than a bench and a, and a pole and a sign and all that. They're, they're digitally assigned and, and give greater flexibility, more options for where people can get on and off the bus. And so with this service, there's an understanding that it's been quite positively received by people in this neighborhood and the people who use it. Where we don't have a good handle necessarily is the, you know, the dust has not yet settled on financially, the costing of this service and how sort of financially viable and successful it's been from, from that side of things. And so it's perhaps a limitation for the work that we're doing here that that information isn't necessarily solid and in place yet. But I think what we are understanding is where the tendency might be to think that, hey, the service might actually come in less expensive than a conventional fixed route service. We're hearing probably the opposite, where at best it sits on par. And if not, the cost of administration and access to the app based technology is actually sort of pushing the service to be likely actually more expensive per service hour than providing a conventional fixed route service. So with that background in mind, we've, and you can see it in the summary report that's in the agenda package is we've outlined a few different potential approaches for provision of on demand in Dawson Creek. And generally, I'm gonna present them here as two different options or two different approaches, but there's sort of some sub opportunities within that. And it really is just a reflection of where your community and where your council would like to potentially take this. Approach number one is using on demand service to support the existing transit service that's in place. We believe, and I think through the conversations we've had and the work we've done, that that would be and should be prioritized on addressing that weekday midday service gap with the potential to extend it to cover a Saturday or a weekend or evening as well. But that weekday midday could be and should be the, the priority. There's an assumption that would need a four hours on demand service window to address that midday gap. And there's probably still further conversation to be had on whether that's repurposing existing service hours that are provided to the fixed route service or whether it's added resource to add more service hours to provide this on demand service during that weekday gap. Approach number two differs in that it would be pursuit of on demand transit as a replacement for the existing system, the existing service. The assumption is that for that's kind of the feasibility work that's in a report, that that would be a, a service window that is similar and reflects the current service window, but the provision would actually be different and it's on demand rather than fixed route. But again, there's lots of opportunity to entertain change beyond simply just the current weekday service windows. I think the challenge or limitation of this approach would be that it could be a more efficient way of going about transit and that your system on many runs is relatively, experiences relatively low ridership. But if we move to a model like this, we're very unlikely to meet the full demand for student busing that the public system currently, currently meets. So that would be absolutely a limitation of this. But I think there's the potential that the flexibility that's sort of ingrained in an, an approach like this would actually prove beneficial to many of the other riders throughout the course of the day who benefit from that flexibility and the potential for more of a, like a curb to curb approach rather than the, the fixed route with stops approaches in place right now. And I guess just to wrap up some of the key findings, so, and this is again articulated in the latter part of the summary report that's in your agenda package. I think item number one really is that in the absence of firm costing information from that Kelowna Crawford pilot example, that it's very difficult to comment concretely on the costs associated with providing a service like this. We've included a few, few figures in the report, but really they're quite heavily caveated that outcomes from this BC Transit pilot in Kelowna are anticipated in the not too distant future. And so that we'd be very, very wise to proceed with these on demand options and scenarios that have been summarized in the summary report alongside a transit service review that's anticipated for twenty twenty five, to then bring those along alongside careful consideration and potential replanning of, of the current convention, conventional service to really start to compare costs of the two and understand if on demand is a good fit for your community. I think touched on it earlier, but if on demand is pursued, it really is and should be prioritized in addressing that weekday midday gap. We heard loud and clear from the community, that's the, the biggest limitation in the current system. There's conversation to be had on whether that's added service or replacement of the current resource that's in place. And okay, I guess two other items we wanted to touch on is we do think some further conversation is warranted around whether the city desires to continue to serve that demand for travel to and from schools, whether that's best done as part of the public transit system. And that conversation will help inform whether the current fixed route approach is the right approach or whether some of these on demand options, sort of lighter touch on demand options might start to make more sense if school busing is really not part of the, the, I guess, the mandate, so to speak, of public transit. Then lastly, we just wanted to re-highlight and reiterate how important step up and ride is. And we've identified in the report the potential to add to the resource that's given in support of step up and ride to help to make sure that it continues to be viable into the future. And this all through the lens of loss of that service would be significant and provide a lot of challenges for people trying to get around your community. So with that, I'll wrap up and very happy to remain on the line to engage in dialogue, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Dan, thank you for the time and the presentation. I'll open it up to council first here for questions, so Counselor Parslow.
Yeah, thank you for a very balanced presentation. I think you approached it in a holistic way, which I appreciated. Just a number of things, I'd like to talk to you about the Kelowna situation. I think you, you inferred by what you said that in the Crawford population area, there was this on demand, but the students were picked up by transit. So what I'm stating is that Kelowna then must have a, a bit of a blended system because where my family lives in Kelowna, my grandchildren are transported by a school district bus. And they pay three hundred dollars a year each for riding for, for the year. So there must be in different regions of Kelowna, a different model. Have you any idea the population of the Crawford area and the demographics of the population that's being served?
So yeah, through the chair, great, great comment, great feedback. In terms of the dual service being provided, school busing and public transit, I don't know the specifics of, of Kelowna or this particular neighborhood on that. It sounds like you're probably, you're probably right, there's a bit of a dual service provision there. This particular neighborhood, the population and the sort of demographics, it is, everyone's probably got sort of a different familiarity with Kelowna. This is down in the south end, it's near the H two O center, the, it's a big rec center. And so the, the neighbor, I had a map up earlier, the neighborhood is very, the, the street layout is quite suburban. So it's one major road in and it kind of leaps around and picks up from a number of very more minor streets. So it's quite suburban. My, having been there in this area, it's, it's a, it's a relatively sort of well to do neighborhood. It's quite a nice neighborhood. The population, I, I don't know for certain, it would be in the hundreds, maybe into the thousands. It's, it's, it's nowhere on the, on the order that your entire community is. It's a, it's a neighborhood, it's truly a neighborhood.
Add to that as well, you know, when we talk about different neighbors, different communities, a big fact in the differences is climate as well. And of course, the climate of the Okanagan is very different than the Peace region. And climate and daylight conditions are a, a big factor determining, I know for seniors, whether they use the transit system or not. That's just a passing, passing comment. I just want you to know that the school district in Kelowna is heavily involved. And we've talked now for two and a half years about engaging the school district here, face to face discussion, the school board about this. And I'm hoping we would actually do something about that in a very tangible way. I appreciate your comments about step up and ride, an invaluable, much appreciated service. And I noted your statistics, which were illuminating to me. I hadn't seen those statistics before that. For me, you know, my focus with paradigm around transit is it's, it's like a dead horse, it's broke here, let's stop feeding it, let's stop flogging it, getting it to move, get rid of it and operate with a completely different paradigm. My paradigm is a cost savings, not a cost enhancement, but that's just my personal view, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parslow. Counselor Al?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Dan, for the presentation report. With respect to on demand services that are being piloted in other BC communities, I know you noted that you don't really have confident figures around what costs are associated. But are these supplementary services also eligible for matching funding through BC Transit? Or would the city of Dawson Creek be expected to pay the full freight?
I, my understanding is it's eligible at the same level that your, that your current system is. Yeah, it's a little more than, yeah, yeah.
And, and similar to that, we would keep any fees associated with it to offset the cost of our end of the transit?
Correct, that's the assumption, you can do it any which way, but that's the assumption here, yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, as. Yeah, I mean, as Council Parzol noted, this has been an ongoing issue for some time. We're well aware that the status quo isn't serving the needs of the community, and it's one of those things where that, up until this point, we haven't had the ability to get more creative around the kind of prescribed types of transit models offered and supported by BC Transit. So it's nice to see them willing to move to something that would hopefully be a better fit for us. The issue I struggle with is, I don't know that, you know, obviously you want transit to work for the people who need it. I don't necessarily know that putting the bulk of our resources into a public system that is effectively uploading the responsibility for transporting kids to and from school onto ourselves from either the school district or the province through the school district, has been the best use of our resources up to this point. Having said that, as you noted in your report, and with the transit ridership by month, without that base of ridership, is, is the system justifiable at all? And that's, that's the challenge is, is, you know, and I think I noted at our last meeting, I guess, is what does success look like? I mean, I know based on the report and based on the conversations had so far, we could certainly spend more, and we'd get more riders, but as a per capita thing, the cost would increase proportionate to the riders and the value. So it's really challenging to kind of thread the needle on what is the best fit for the community, and with the limitations around geography, you know, we're not going to get the same bang for our buck that they're going to get in Kelowna. But it's a really valuable, valuable report that I'll likely send to a few people who've been sending me emails over, over recent years, and I look forward to hearing my fellow councilors' thoughts on it. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Councilal. Council McDonald?
Thank you, Worship. Dan, in your report, you said the city's contribution for transit right now was $400,000. Is that 2023 numbers?
So my understanding, I believe that's fiscal, so that's sort of trickling into early 2024 as well, up to March 2024, I believe.
Okay, because I just want to point out, our budgeted amount for BC Transit in 2025 is $544,814, which is a 36% increase on that number, and we've been noticing our transit going up substantially year over year since we've come into office. Like we say, a broken system that is costing us more and more, excuse me, I'm sorry, each year, and I would just want to reiterate what Council Earl and Council Parzol said, that increasing cost to a broken system already does not necessarily fall within what I think makes sense for us at this time. That was my only comment, was just on the pricing on there, thank you.
Thank you, Council McDonald. I had a few questions, Dan. Just on table 12 in your report, it's got, like you compared Fort St. John Terrace, Kid Mat Prince Rupert, and Dawson Creek, which was, was nice to see that break out, but do those communities I didn't see in there, do they transport school students?
That's a good question. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I feel like that's a really good point, and maybe something we can dig in on a little bit, just to, just to, like you're getting at, is get a bit of an apples-to-apples type comparison here.
Yeah, and then on page 17, well, just on the survey, and you referred to it in your presentation, how many people were, participated in that survey?
Yeah, I think it was, here it is, 258 responses. So perhaps where you're going is that's, we need to take that with, you know, a grain of salt, I guess, so to speak, in that it's not broad representation from your community, but it's maybe a nice temperature check.
I think like, it might be broad from our community, because the ridership that need our transit is a pretty small percentage, right? But that's one of, that's one of the things we need to, you know, our base core values of a community is having transit for everybody that, that needs it, right? And maybe it is 250, but, you know, yeah, I don't know, I'm just curious about the school thing, and then two, if we were to, you know, just to do the on-demand, and just, just to offer that service, what it would cost. I mean, there's a lot of questions that come from here, and where we go, right? So. But yeah, I didn't have too many other questions. I have, you know, lots around it, but no, I felt the presentation was very good, and there was lots of detail in there, so thank you. Oh, Council Parzol?
Yeah, I think the core value is those that are challenged to engage with the community, have some assistance with transportation, doesn't have to be transit. Transit is just a method, it's, the value is accessibility. With all surveys, it's also interesting if you could get the demography of the survey, how many people, the people who surveyed, where do they live, their age, and so on. And that adds more value to, to demography, it's, you know, analysis of who's responding to these surveys. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parzol. Any other questions?
Your Worship, just, just on the budget that Council McDonald brought up. So this year's budget for contract is just over $500,000, and then our budget for revenue is about just over $90,000.
So that's the offset.
The offset, so not far off on the 400, you know, the, the net cost theoretically is just over $400,000 if everything goes as anticipated.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Council Parzol?
Point of information, the NDP government a few years ago, during COVID, I think it was, said that school students do not pay.
Under 12.
Is that under the age of 12, is that still the case?
Yes, and I was, it's a good point, because I did think about that when we were talking about the, most of our ridership is school students, and probably most of them don't pay.
Thank you.
Oh, so just for clarity, go ahead, Devon.
So through Your Worship, even though it, under 12 is not paid, through our bylaw, under five is not paid, so BC Transit has an agreement with us between five and 12, we use the demographics from the ridership, from provincial statistics as well, and which match up pretty closely with our demographics, and we do get paid through BC Transit for the, the under 12s that ride for free. So we don't lose that revenue, because it's a provincial program.
Could you repeat that, let's speak a little louder for me?
Between five and 12, the under 12 program, the provincial program, we get a revenue from BC Transit on that monthly, based on our ridership, based on a prorated formula for the provincial statistics.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devon. Council McDonald?
Thank you, Worship. So for clarification, then, is that in that $90,000 we receive then, or where is that accounted for?
Good catch. Go ahead, Melissa.
Through Your Worship to Council McDonald, so we get, it's really out of that contract, really, the $500,000 that we have budgeted for the contract, and the difference between the 500 and the 540 is a contract to Step Up &amp; Ride, and also some supply expense just for our bus stops, just so you're wondering about the difference between the 540 and the 500. We receive a credit on our invoices for $6,230 that really reduces that contract value, so it's not included in the $90,000 worth of revenue. Really, our contract would just be that much more, if that wasn't included in there.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks, Council McDonald. Any other questions? Kevin, sorry, just so I'm aware, was the plan after this part, is like, was there more coming from Dan and his team, or this is, okay, all right. Well, thank you, Dan, for, for joining us and for the presentation, and yeah, for your time. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you, everyone, appreciate the opportunity.
All right, we're just going to take a quick break here, five or 10 minutes, and then we'll come back. For Monday, February 24th, to order, next order business was 2.2, we have Katrin Saxte, Planning Consultant, and Chad Carlstrom, not sure what your title is, but with Urban Systems in attendance regarding the Main Street revitalization downtown visioning. So welcome. Push that, there you go, the floor is all yours.
Thank you so much. So good afternoon, it is a pleasure to be before you today, and we're excited for this conversation on Dawson Creek's downtown. We know the downtown has been a discussion topic for many, many years in the community. So really quickly, I just was going to go over our agenda for today in the time that we have. Our goal for this session really is to provide you with some background and understanding of what downtown revitalization is and could entail, discuss the actual project that brings before, brings us before you today, explores a little bit what we mean when we say the downtown. It can encompass different things for different people, and also discuss what council's vision and priorities are for the downtown. The, we got here today through actually an NDIS grant that the city applied for a little while ago, and so the intent of that grant is to explore at a very high level downtown and Main Street revitalization in Dawson Creek. So really quickly, you guys are fortunate, maybe, to know myself, but then I'd love to have my colleague introduce himself a little bit more.
Yeah, good afternoon, my name is Chad Carlstrom. I'm a professional engineer with Urban Systems, also a student of urban design and winter city planning, and so I bring this background to the projects that I work on, and yeah, happy to jump in here and provide some overview on some guiding principles when we think about downtown revitalizations.
Great, thank you.
So within this workshop today, there's three main points that we want to communicate with you. The first two is in the spoken council, and then the third, when we get to the vision and identifying priorities, they'll be in the closed portion. But to start off, we do want to develop a common definition and understanding of downtown revitalization. So unpacking the language, unpacking the patterns that we see in successful places, and communicating that. And then second, we want to review background documents and existing site information. So in recent years in downtown Dawson Creek, you've made some improvements, we want to reflect that and acknowledge that. And then we also want to acknowledge that there has been past background studies that have informed where we've got to today. And so just a very high-level overview of that, more of a reminder of how we got to now.
Okay, so throughout the presentation, we're actually really hoping that you can keep these two questions in mind. Why is downtown revitalization important for Dawson Creek, and why now? Is there something specific about this point in time that has made this a priority? It is on your strategic, in your strategic plan and on your strategic priorities. The other question, too, is we'd love for you to keep the idea of, what is your vision for Dawson Creek? Keep that in mind throughout the presentation. What does that look like? What does downtown look like in five years, 10 years, 15 years? And just kind of keep that in mind as, as we kind of navigate the next bit of time that we have together. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit now about what a downtown revitalization is. As with many things, this can mean very different things to different people.
Yeah, so if we unpack a few definitions that are out there, you know, some define it as the physical and economic renewal of a central business district of a community, revitalizing downtown means strengthening the social, physical, and economic value of a community's traditional central business district, and revitalization projects include almost every aspect of civic life, social, cultural, economic, environmental, and physical. So yes, it can mean the infrastructure that we see, the physical parts that build the downtown environment. It can also involve programming and policies, it can involve activation, the things that we do to bring people into a common area. All that can form parts about downtown revitalization. And if I back up on a timescale a little bit, and consider, you know, this revitalization, you know, to revitalize something, to bring back that vitality, yeah, we can also pause and consider, it's like, how did that get lost over time? And, you know, across North American communities, they're in a common state to Dawson Creek now. Oftentimes, when cities were first formed, there was this central district in the heart of the downtowns. As cities evolved in North America, and in North America for many places, we have lots of land available to us, and so it kind of started to drift away from that central core. But now communities are realizing, there's something special there in the core of our communities, and we want to honor that and bring that energy back into that core. Citizens like it, tourists like it, it can be good for businesses, good for the economy, good for the social aspects of life. And so there's a lot of, lot of opportunity within Dawson Creek right now, and yeah, it's an exciting project that you guys are starting on.
So the next two slides are gonna just sort of talk about two elements of revitalization. One is incentives and initiatives, and so these are sort of some of the key components. They really help to foster a good economic and development climate. This is different than actual physical or capital improvements, although incentives can encourage property owners to consider them. So in recent years, the city has actually done quite a bit of work in terms of background research and exploration on the needs of business and property owners in downtown Dawson Creek. We actually did a couple of years ago, I think, engage with every business owner in the downtown. We've looked at different communities that are exploring incentives and capital improvements, and seeing like, what's working for them, what's working well, what does that success look like? And from that work, and then in discussions with the city staff, we've developed basically a development-friendly program for business and property owners, which consists of enhanced facade grants, pop-up business initiatives, demolition grants, revitalization tax exemption program, which I know will be talked about later on today, and then a municipal fee rebate program. So there's lots of activities happening on the incentive front, which is one element of a revitalization.
Another element of revitalization are the capital improvements. So these are the physical tangible items that make up the structure of the downtown. When we think about that, we can separate it into categories such as circulation and accessibility improvements. So how do people arrive to the downtown, and then how do they move through the downtown? So it can be in forms of enhanced sidewalks with greater emphasis on accessibility, lighting, and signage, and wayfinding, especially for the visitor economy, those who are coming to Dawson Creek's downtown for the first time. Are they able to intuitively work their way around the downtown environment? Public realm improvements, so these can be things such as landscaping, furnishings, trees, things like that. There can be a consistency in the architectural language that can be brought into the downtown, too. So then things appear as cohesive and complementary to each other. And then capital improvements, they can also be up to the scale of upgrades to existing underground utilities, you know, in terms of service delivery as a municipality for the downtown businesses and, and parcel owners, you know, they want to have the confidence that if they're making an investment into a new building or renovations of an existing one, that the water will flow and the sewer will drain, and so those are all important considerations, too. So when we consider the scope and scale of what revitalization could mean, it can go on the left-hand side, more surface-level improvements, you know, they, they could be less expensive, more cheerful. expensive, more cheerful, perhaps easier to integrate. So, you could get some quick wins from that. Generally, there's lower overall capital costs for that, limited possibilities for larger changes. And you would want to consider it with the timing of larger infrastructure replacements if that's identified in studies. We would want any smaller-scale investments to be complementary to a larger vision. On the other hand, on the right-hand side of the scope and scale is the full-depth reconstruction. So, you know, if you so chose, you could start from all your underground infrastructure, replace that, start building up the new roadways. Perhaps there's a new road cross-section and then your sidewalks, a beautification, and all of that happens at once. And there are trade-offs to both. You know, one you can consider is, well, first, the capital costs alone, but then for the businesses downtown, what's the frequency and level of disruption that the business community might be tolerable with? You know, is there a few small interventions on a more frequent basis, or maybe a lot of disruption at a condensed period of time? And, you know, one model that I might just put out to you in considering the downtown revitalization is, you could compare it to, say, a mall, a traditional mall. You know, a mall, it's its own geographical place. It has a mix of tenants or storefronts in there. It's a place that attracts people. It has a common architectural language. And so, if you put on your hats as a mall manager, that's kind of what a downtown could become. It can become its own place with its own identity that attracts businesses and people there. And so, towards the scope and scale too, you have a wide range of areas in which you could intervene and help guide the future of the downtown. You know, if similar to a mall, if there was a vacant tenant in there, you know, you could actively try and fill that vacancy in different ways, much like a downtown environment too. Yeah, you do have tools which you can act in certain ways, create a nice tenant mix that's complementary, that attracts people. Now, here's more of a visual representation of the scope and scale towards the downtown improvements. Again, on the left, some examples of more beautifications, some furnishings, pop-up spaces. Those are becoming more popular all throughout North America, parklets or patios, you know, wayfinding and signage. But then, as you get further over to the right, these are more permanent investments that would want to be made sure that if they are done, that they are constructed in such a way and a sequencing that you get the full longevity out of them. So, planting areas, surface treatments, or utility replacements and all that underground infrastructure. You know, towards the patterns of what makes a great place, there are commonalities to that. There's the project for public spaces, which has done a really good job in capturing the elements of what creates a great place, considering the sociability, access and linkages to and through the place, the comfort and image, how it feels for a person to be within a place, and the uses activities. It's like, why do people come to this space? What's that stickiness that makes them want to stick around and spend more time at a place? You know, is that place welcoming for everyone? And, you know, through good urban design and planning, you have the opportunity to create a place that's special and that draws people in. You know, again, how to design popular places, places for people. This comes from "Of Streets and Squares" by Katigan and Create Streets. And applying some of these principles into urban designs is, you know, edges attract people. So, instead of trying to create too much open space, create spaces with edges, and then start filling in those edges with perhaps places for people to sit, for places for people to gather, trying to integrate some greenery, beauty, these things that attract people to places. Yeah, also comment on like gentle density and human-scale enclosures and mixed use. You know, these are things that perhaps have drifted away from some downtowns over time, perhaps being more commercial space. But if we start to generate a mixed use of spaces, having places where people can choose to work and live in close proximity to each other, suddenly it activates that street, that public space for longer hours out of a full day.
Okay, so now we're just going to go through at a really high level, some of the key documents that the city has undertaken over the past, I'll say roughly 20 years, just to provide some context on the great work that has been done in the community.
Yeah, before we get into the past reports, just want to connect on what downtown is today and some of the recent improvements that you'll see as you walk and drive around the downtown. New intersection lighting along 10th Street, tree planting on vacant lots. There are still a number of vacant lots in the downtown, which are opportunities. You know, these are great features to help build up that next generation of downtown businesses. You know, there are events and regular programming that happens in the downtown. Those are successes, very popular show-and-shine that happens within the streets and avenues of downtown. But, you know, through the OCP process, some of the things that were identified, lack of public use areas, and just honoring that there are many small businesses that are struggling in the downtown currently. Back in 2005, there was the Dawson Creek Communications Plan and Downtown Revitalization Plan. And here, under the objectives and policies within this plan, you might find that some of these are still important today, even though, you know, we're 20 years ahead in 2025 now. A lot of those same principles, again, that create great places for people, still apply today. And so, we can draw on some of these past studies as we look into the future as where we are right now.
So, the Dawson Creek OCP back in 2018 had quite a robust section with respect to the downtown and economic development and prosperity. The OCP, as you're aware, is undergoing just an update, and it builds on the great thinking and input provided in 2018. So, there's a lot of talk in the official community plan about supporting retention and growth of existing businesses. It's really important to keep what we've got here thriving, considers incentives that encourage more investment in downtown Dawson Creek, working with other agencies and jurisdictions to strengthen the regional economy. So, all these things lend itself to a more vibrant downtown. And then, the Attractions Master Plan from 2007 was focused on providing guidance and direction for enhancing the attractions in Dawson Creek and the region in order to attract visitors. There is a section in the plan about the downtown. It also focused on 10th Street and its connections to the NAR Park in the north, and on reducing the dominance of vehicles to try and draw more pedestrians downtown. So, very common themes that we've seen over the years. So, this is a revised downtown map. This has been compiled from the input that we received from council, staff, and the community last year through the OCP process. We asked participants to map out the downtown. And when we overlaid all of the input that we got, and we got quite a bit, this was the area that was common and sort of was felt really captured the downtown. It still is quite a large area. It's not as large as it is in your current OCP, but it was an intent, an attempt to kind of get consistency around. When we're talking about downtown Dawson Creek, what are we talking about? What is that area? And then, the other piece of this, so I guess, you know, the question for you to think about, and we'll get into it this in the closed portion, is, does this, in your mind, capture downtown Dawson Creek? And then, the second component of this is, where is Main Street? We've heard in previous studies, a lot of commentary about 10th Street from NAR, but is it to the Calvin Kirk Center? Is it to Ken Park? Is like, what is Main Street? So, we'll delve into that a little bit further in the next portion of our time with you today. And then, this slide, I just wanted to, these next two slides, really quickly, I'm not going to go through them in detail. We did this engagement with council, staff, and the community for the official community plan. And these are the things that we've heard about what are the elements of a vibrant downtown, and also what supports or resources do you think would help attract more businesses? The ones highlighted in green are the ones that are common. So, this is council and staff engagement, and this is the community engagement. So, there's a lot of commonalities between yourselves and what the community is seeking for in the downtown. So, we thought that was important to highlight. Okay, so now that we've provided you with a lot of background, we kind of wanted to circle back to these two questions that we posed at the beginning. We're curious if you have any initial thoughts before we explore them in more detail. Where does Dawson Creek want to be in 20 years, when you think about a vision for the downtown? And then, you know, and thinking about some of the priorities, there's a lot of priorities between council, staff, and the community. So, just, again, something we want you to think about, and we'll explore it a little bit more in the next section. Okay, so, really quickly, our next steps for this, once we are done our time with you today, is to hopefully develop a vision statement for the downtown based on your input. We'd love to be able to develop some guiding principles that are based on the prioritization exercise, and then we'll bring a document back to council. And I think this is really critical, and Chad, please jump in here. Having a very clear vision and guiding principles to inform all decisions you make with respect to the downtown and to Main Street that you keep coming back to, to making sure that your actions as you go to revitalize downtown and Main Street are in alignment with that, is really, really critical. And that, we blitzed through it.
Thank you, both of you, for the presentation. Yeah, it was a good presentation. Thank you. I will open it up to council here for questions. There's Council Parslow.
It's not so much a question as sort of a statement I want to make. I much admire your organization and has done some great work. I think it's important for council to set some, I think this is what you're possibly asking, some parameters. I don't want this to come across at all as a frustration with urban systems. It's not. I think it's more, when you're given the scope of work, it is not well-defined. By that, I mean, what are the bookends? What are the parameters of the work? And I'm concerned about that as this project, given our context, our situation. If I look at the example of the work that was done, good work, I'm not quivering about the work at all, over the Mile Zero Park, a lot of community engagement, no parameters were set by council. And so, Urban Systems developed a report that was, the cost of doing the work was way, way beyond the capacity of this council. And I want to respect your time and this time of our council. And also, whenever you engage a community, they need to know what the bookends. Are we going to talk about a $30 million revitalization project over 10 years? When we've got, we incurred a significant loss in revenue and incurred increases, significant increases in operating expenditures, which is the situation with this council. It's a $2 million lost revenue, a $1 million excluding salary increases and so on, operating costs. It's a $2 million gap. And so, I think your questions are great. Your presentation was comprehensive, but I just want to make that statement. That really worries me. I'll be going into another exercise here that will basically gather dust because of the affordability. So, what is the affordability? That's something that I think this council needs to have some discussion about, because, you know, the sky's the limit when you just have an open-ended thing. And I admire the work done in Fort St. John on 100th Street, but I do know through my contacts, through Urban Systems, how that was established. And a lot of thought, a lot of saving, a lot of grant applications. I don't know how Grand Prairie did it, but I certainly admire the work and the net result. But, you know, comparing a 70,000 community to a 12,000, 13,000 community is apples-to-oranges comparison, as might be a 25,000 population to a 12. But I'm just, wanted to say, this is not a criticism of urban systems. It's a criticism at this end that we need to set some parameters whenever we have any engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parslow. Questions? Council Earl?
Just to, for my own edification. So, we're gonna have some more conversation about the topics presented on following this particular agenda item, or we're gonna have, I just want to know what's, I want to make good use of your time and not just ask you a bunch of questions. We'll get to that next time. I mean, to Council Parslow's point, and one thing, when you pulled up the 2005 plan for downtown revitalization, obviously, it occurs to us as we make these plans and strategies. And something that kind of happened to us in the last council term is, we came out with some very ambitious strategies, and we didn't adequately resource them or account for staff's time or what our capacity was. And as a result, I think we ended up with a lot of kind of frustrated people trying to do stuff off the side of their desk without the adequate amount of direction and resources. And we don't want to end up there again, to Council Parslow's point. And certainly, with something as nebulous as downtown revitalization, you can go off in a million different directions. And I guess, you know, what we look at is, you know, bang for our buck, what we can, you know, and this ties into some of the other, we're doing the tangible capital asset management work right now. And as part of that work, I assume we'll have a timeline for when certain pieces of infrastructure in the downtown core, both underground and sidewalks and what have you, have to be replaced. And whatever, you know, capital component of downtown revitalization we come up with is going to have to take that into account. So, you know, there's a lot of threads to bring together. For me, with respect to what I'd like to see in 20 years, I certainly don't want to see what we just saw in the presentation, where you pulled up the 2005 downtown revitalization presentation. And, you know, many of these things are still relevant because they didn't adequately happen. It also kind of drives home the extent to which there's a lot of things that aren't within our control as a council, right? You look at externalities versus what we actually have say over. And I guess my focus would be, you know, what can we actually meaningfully impact? Certainly, we're a region with a significant resource and petroeconomy, but those are global, you know, resources, and I have no say over the market. Similarly, the trajectory of technological advances, how much commercial space and office space is going to be required 20 years from now, given the trend towards remote work, I have no idea. And I don't want anything so prescriptive as to assume that. You know, I think what spoke to me in your presentation was trying to recapture that sense of community. trying to recapture that sense of community that's become so diffuse in, in recent years between social media and, you know, a place for people to go and actually deal with one another face to face. Where, you know, it's, it's understood if you head downtown, something's going to be happening. There's going to be somebody there. Businesses are going to be open. It's not, you know, at by 5:30, it's just an empty sprawling mass of buildings. It's, it's people. So to the extent, um, you know, we can impact that within what we're capable of doing, that's what I want to pursue.
Thank you, Council Earl. Council McDonald?
Uh, thank you, worship. Um, kudos to Council Earl. He articulated my thoughts very, very well. You know, it is disappointing to see a, a study from 2005, 20 years later, and such great ideas on it that were never acted upon, right? And I agree, I don't want to see us in 2045, looking back on this study going, "A lot of great ideas. Too bad." Right? And, um, your one question, what is your vision of Dawson Creek downtown? I agree with Council Earl again. It's, uh, the statement of something that is bringing our community together. That downtown is a gathering, gathering place with, you know, annual events like the car show, like the Christmas tree light up that brings our community together. Those, uh, the Christmas tree light up, no matter if it's minus 20 or minus five, it brings a couple thousand people downtown together. And it's, uh, you never have a better feeling for Dawson Creek and what amazing community we are than that point there. And that would be my vision of downtown, is that it's bringing our community out and together.
Thank you, Council McDonald. Um, yeah, I agree with a, a lot of that. I think like in a perfect world, you can say 20 or 30 years down the, you know, down the road that you would have a downtown that's all themed in this perfect, you know, corridor. But, but that's not a real reality and one we sit on. So it, it's about community. How do we like bring our community together by planting trees down there and redoing things to just give it some life? And that's bringing community together. And, um, yeah, so that's kind of what, what I envisioned as well. The other part too is, is, I, I know you touched on a few other communities, but I was, um, lived in Cornell for a while and had a business downtown Cornell. And, uh, they do have a very prominent downtown, but it doesn't come from the city directing them. It comes from the downtown association. So like when you're asking in your presentation, what direction do we want to give? Like, I don't want to give direction. I want to hear from what our downtown wants and to build it up, right? So, you know, I was involved with that association down there and, um, you know, Cornell's community downtown and their economy thrived because of that association. They brought people down there and it benefited all those businesses. And they don't have, you know, they have the odd empty building and stuff. So I'm more for like, how do we like offer support to downtown? How do we listen? Would be number one. How do we listen to what's needed from our community? Versus dictating that it needs to be like this or that, like it's, um, yeah, just kind of my thoughts. And I don't know if like a lot of those other downtowns, like, you know, I know Revelstoke or Whistler, there's a lot, Smithers that have, you know, very nice downtowns. I don't know if they have associations as well. I just know in Cornell that it worked very well. And I'm sure the city has some involvement with it, but, but a lot of the direction in Cornell came from that association, not, not generally the cities. So, but anyway, just my thoughts, so.
Council Apollonia?
Thank you, worship. Uh, thank you for the presentation and welcome back again. Yeah, just only my thing because, uh, of course, when we sit here since 2023 or 2022, we read the, uh, uh, strategies about, uh, which is number one is downtown revitalization. I'm just hoping it's already, already rolling, but I think we're getting back and forth that, right? So, yeah, the only thing maybe is because I'm talking to several people, uh, they want to see, uh, even as me, I want to see at least the downtown, like at least 90% capacity pool, like totally active, regardless of what time, maybe extending until late hours, because sometimes that's for them, the people that I talk to, it's a safety issue, especially after, after hours. One thing that struck me is they're showing the pictures, like especially like during Christmas time. It's more vibrant, like for example, the, the involvement of the community. Because I know we're, we're doing the, the Christmas tree light up, but I think which is, may or may not say things is correct. We need to engage more the, the people that are, are really renting or occupying the space. So at least they have full participation rather than we are directing. I think maybe that's the, the picture that I saw, because I think even the store owners are the one decorating themselves, their stores, at least as part of the, the pieces, just to make sure that the, the downtown is more revitalized or more engaging. Especially now, because I think this, this, uh, this, this information that I'm getting is because of the international community, communities that's going here in Dawson Creek, like the younger generations, they seeing, okay, I saw this, but I saw this on other places. So they start to compare. So that's why I'm also saying this. So I think they want more, like more, um, not really progress, but I think more enticing to do inside the, the, the downtown. So, yeah, uh, rather because, uh, uh, we are, we are aware that it's getting empty month by month or maybe year by year. And how we could capture the big, the big, uh, the big players, maybe in downtown. Because for example, some of the people that I'm seeing, especially those, uh, those people that wants to shop, they're looking for winners. Like they're, 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 they're looking for marshals. Because especially now the strip store is not, is, is really out now in downtown. So what's to shop more? Especially because I'm not saying that most in the shop in Dawson, uh, in downtown is expensive, but at least something that, something to consider, for example, that's to pump another big player there, at least to encourage the rest of the, the, the businesses there will be doing us the same. So, yeah. So at least it will also gather more, gather more customers or more, uh, more, more goers, so something like that. So that's, that's a bit of my piece. Now, yeah, as I said, my vision is packed, more people coming out, uh, either regardless of what time, early or late. And of course, safety, of course, and, uh, yeah, more, more, uh, I think the, the, the sign, that, I think we discussed before, the, the finding, the, the fine signs or the, the way signs, so something like that. So at least it's more of a help. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Apollonia.
Kevin, um, do you envision here, do we discuss this more? Did you want to move into the next portion? Okay, all right. Okay, I'm just gonna vary the agenda and go to six. Six recess to close committee of the whole meeting. 6.1, resolution to move into the committee of whole meeting, close to the public. Agenda item 2.1, section 91K. Negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provisions, provision of a municipal service that are at their preliminary stages and that in the view of the council could reasonably be, be expected, can reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public. Council Earl, second. Council Sudnick, call that to vote.
Make sure I voted.
Got one more to vote.
I voted.
Please watch and Charlie.
We're all in.
Yeah, I checked myself first. I've done that too many times.
What does GS make?
It's good. Vote is closed and it's carried. All right, do we need a couple minutes?
Monday, February 24th, act order. Next order of business was three, adoption of minutes, 3.1 minutes of committee, the whole meeting held on August 12th, 2024 for adoption. Council Earl, second. Counselor McDonald, I'll call that to vote.
Is Amy's card pulled up?
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Thank you.
Vote is closed and it's carried. Any business arising? All right. Uh, next reports, 5.1, we have report number 25 dash 032 from the General Manager Development Services regarding revitalization, tax exemption, bylaw, key considerations. So because this isn't committee, the whole, there's no recommendation there. So we can just get into discussion on it. But I might just throw something out there to start the discussion. But first, I just want to thank you for the report. There, there was a lot of great information in there and, and a lot of, uh, yeah, it, it was just really good. So thank you for the time into it. But I'm just going to throw this out here, there and see where it goes. But my kind of thoughts are, is, is that, you know, there's the nine different classes, obviously farm probably not too relevant in our community. But my thoughts are, is, is that we would look at a, a five-year all-class tax exemption so that where we would start with 100%, 75%, 50%, 25% and go down to zero for all classes. I think, um, my logic for that is, is that we haven't, you know, in the last five or six years, we haven't had much development in our community. Our population hasn't changed in 50 years. So I think to do it in all, it makes it a little cleaner, a little easier to proceed unless I'm, you know, missing something. But, yeah, it's just my thought. If we can help spike the growth in any area, it will benefit the community long-term. There's very little cost, um, from what I've seen to, you know, giving a tax exemption at the beginning. Well, long-term, we will gain that revenue, which will benefit the community. My other thoughts would be is that we would do that five years. The start date would be once occupancy was permitted. So there would be taxes paid up until there's full occupancy permit. And then it would go into a, a five-year tiered, starting with 100% the first year and working its way down. And I, I know there's been talk about different areas and residential, multi-residential downtown, but I just feel like if we did it across the board, it would be easy. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Council Earl?
Um, to be, so you're talking about within the prescribed zone or just community-wide?
Within the boundaries of the city.
Good. Within the boundaries of the city.
Yeah. So I would think I'd be talking residential, main industrial, every part of it. Cause we don't dictate anything outside the boundaries.
No, no, no. Uh, and I'm just thinking with respect to incentivizing investment in general versus if we're looking at.
Well, it would be under development.
Yeah.
And I, I think the other part would be on new development, but would also be on enhancements as well. So it would be the same formula for on an, you know, if a business was to take their, you know, say million dollar vis, business and invest in it and it became a $3 million assessment, that they would pay their normal on the, the base of what it was before and it would be, yeah, on the rest.
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine for improvement on businesses. I'm just saying like, if somebody puts in a hot tub in their house up the hill, are they, and it increases the value of their property, we're not going to be tracking.
There would be a minimum threshold of investment.
As, as is number one, it could get messy. And number two, I don't think that's, I, I'm, I'm not looking to involve myself that much in.
No. So, so you're talking, you know, I think we had, in the report, Devon had indicated, you know, as an example, $75,000. You could pick a number, but, you know, of minimum investment before that triggers this.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Thank you for the clarification.
And I guess too, just to that, like on a residential property, if somebody's doing siding and windows, their assessment's not going to go up or a hot, uh, I mean, if BC assessment, I came and looked at every single place, it would maybe go up. Like, it's a little bit different because
Yeah.
you're not pulling a building permit unless you're doing structural changes, right?
So you're gonna, you're gonna provide the exemption on the construction value, but you're right. The, the end construction may not actually alter their assessment by any appreciable amount. Like you said, you could spend $75,000 on a roof, windows, siding and a new deck, but it may not actually change.
The value.
The value of your, your property. So, so not, you know, we'd provide, in that case, you might provide the exemption, but may be little to no actual difference.
Cause it would only be on the dividends. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Council Parslow?
Yeah, well, I'd like to see some financial assessment of this proposal before I could comment. You know, let's say we had a variety of scenarios, we had a 5% of the, of the buildings take up this, the property owners take this up, 10%, 15, 20, what if they all take it up? But not that that's likely to happen, but, you know, as you, as you look at the financials, maybe we'll have a picture that we can have some more informed debate about. But I have no idea about this, the wisdom of this, until I see some analysis about its financial impact, both short-term and long-term. Thank you.
So, so three worship, just, just to clarify. So, um, if we have a, a, a business, let's say, uh, take it up either through renovation or build new, the financial impact is going to be in year one, we're not going to get any revenue on that in, increased assessment. And then we'll, you know, in this model, you'd gradually see increased revenue through taxation in year two and beyond. The theory is, is that if we didn't have that, we wouldn't see anything. I guess the comparative would be is if we did, if that business was going to do it anyways, then that's where you're going to see maybe a net loss for four years.
Well, I say, Kevin, with all these things.
Council Parslow, could you push your mic, please?
With all these things, you need some financial modeling. I haven't seen.
Any financial modeling, looking at all the possible scenarios. That's all I'm asking for.
But I, I guess just maybe if I'm catching what you're saying, Kevin, to clarify, so say, you know, developer comes to our community and builds an apartment building. What, are you wanting to know what the cost to the city would be for him to build that?
I'm talking about existing properties. I'm talking about existing properties and new developments. I'd like to see the scenarios played out with some assumptions around assessment, assessments, what's being deferred, what's its impact on our revenue? And what is the long-term impact? Surely if you, you're proposing something that I've not seen any financials on, and I've never seen anything that shows me how it's worked in other communities in spite of asking for it for four or five months. Only privately, not by a resolution. I'm not looking at you, Kevin, in this. So I just like, before I can comment on anything, I need some information in writing.
Thank you, Council Parslow. Council Sudnick?
Thank you, worship. Um, yeah, just I agree with your comment about allowing that through the whole municipality and whether it's for, um, new construction or renovations. Obviously, minimum, minimum requirements financially would have to be set so that no, we don't have to deal with somebody building a deck or putting a hot tub in. But when you look at, you know, major commercial investment, you know, to, as an example with what Grand Prairie does, you know, they've got a $25 million number on a 10-year development. If your project's $25 million and over, you get 10% a year for 10 years. So that's a pretty good head start on a, on a development. Um, if it's a $75,000 renovation, yeah, you could easily spend that on windows, roofs and a deck and a furnace as a residential homeowner. So then the question that they may have is, we incentivize, whether it's through grants for businesses, for facades, well, what is there, if anything, we can do for homeowners to improve their properties in our community to stimulate building, to stimulate new construction, whether it be commercial or residential. So I think it's just figuring out what that minimum is and what qualifies for three, four, five or an eight, nine or a 10-year scale.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Sudnick. Council Earl?
So question that was, uh, generated based on the, the back and forth with Kevin, I guess through to staff. If we're undertaking a tax abatement or a tax exemption for capital, and it's only going to be the city's portion of the taxation, to be clear, we're not going to pick up the freight for exempting school taxes or hospital or RD stuff. But to what extent do we have to share that information with BC assessment if we're doing it in-house? Because if somebody goes out and we say it might not impact their assessment, but if we then have to turn around and give BC assessment a list of, here's 50 people that spent 80 grand in renovations on their house, BC assessment would be foolish not to turn around and say, okay, well, your assessment just went up 80 grand.
Yeah. So three worship, um, BC assessment collects data from us on building permit information. So then they take that and they do what they will. So they can certainly look at the, the scope of the, the permits and determine whether they need to. So they can certainly look at the scope of the permits and determine whether they need to
Adjust.
adjust, reassess, whatever they do. But there is, just on the assessment piece, there is a couple of options that we need to talk about of whether we, this process freezes assessment or freezes the rate. There's kind of two different methods on how you can apply an exemption. Like I said, you can either freeze the assessment and then gradually increase the assessment based on the improvement. So you're working with B C assessment through that process and Melissa might have more information on this than I, but. Or the alternative is is we freeze our tax rate on the property for the term and then adjust that accordingly, dependent on what the graduated, you know, settled upon method is. So there's some work to do there both ways?
I mean, intuitively, I would assume we'd freeze the rate. But I would seek advice from staff on what would be, number one, the least labor-intensive to track and make the most, just looking back to the tax exemption stuff we did when Flavia was here. And then a year, you know, just so we don't have to constantly be revisiting it to find, you know, what, what would be functional, I guess would be my question.
Do you have any thoughts?
And I don't have a strong preference either way, other than what is most functional and going to be the least aggravation for staff.
Through your, through your worship to Counsel Earl. So I believe in the report, we point that that will be a decision that would come later once we get this initial direction. And then we plan on doing some scenarios with potentially a remodel, depending on if we give indication, if it wants to go residential. But we're looking for some initial direction with this report that Devon did to kind of guide that. But we do plan, we're, we're just down the initial investigation on what either method looks like. And specifically, we just want to make sure that we understand the implications with freezing the rate or assessment with our requisition to the R D. So we're working through that.
So through your worship, between bringing you this report here today and having this initial conversation and bringing a draft bylaw, to your point, Counsel Parslow, I had written down in the summary conclusion that the next steps would involve bringing concrete, specific examples from smaller northern communities with revitalization tax exemption. When we'd originally brought you this report, when I'd, I'd referenced Melissa's great report from earlier in April, we didn't provide how well it was working. We planned to do that. At the same time, we also plan to bring you examples, like Melissa said, of scenarios for the typical development and what that would look like, so that you would have a better understanding of the cost impact and the financial impact to the city by, by allowing something like this.
Thank you, Devon. Counsel McDonald?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Excuse me. I, I agree with you. I like the, the citywide, all levels. I think that would be great. I, I respect what Counsel Parslow's saying about the, the what-ifs. How much revenue could we shortfall ourselves if everybody took it up in year one or year two, right? I would wonder if we need to protect ourselves by having a cap there of how many people can, can use it first year, second year, right, et cetera? Or like Counsel Sudnick said in the G P model, where we don't do 100% reduction. We do a longer term of, say, 12 and a half percent over eight years or 10 over 10 years or something like that, just so that we do not take away all of our revenue. I think that's dangerous. It could put us in a really bad place. Be great to have all that kind of investment in the community, but not if it bankrupts the, the city itself. You know, I, I like the, you know, 20 over five years, 12 and a half over eight or even the staggered one, like you said, right? Maybe it is 50% in the first year and then a 40, 30, 20, right? Something like that. But the 100% I think is, is pretty extreme and could, could bite us, right? If it got taken up too much.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counsel Sudnick, or sorry, Counsel Parslow.
Yeah, the, thank you, Devon. That's exactly what I want. Yeah, I, I need to spend more time thinking about this. Another worry we've all got, of course, is the, I mean, we're having a major U-turn in our relationships with our major trading partner, it seems. What happens if, you know, all assessment is based upon really the, the price of, for instance, my house assessment dropped 5% because of sales in my neighborhood, right? All assessments are relation, relationally driven. So what is the general recession? And there's a general downturn in assessment of, maybe being extreme to some of you, but I think we're facing extreme circumstances. In one of the scenarios, how would this system work if there was, say, a general downturn in assessment of 20%? Then what was the modeling show us? I'm not, I don't have any idea, but I'm just saying, this is in the context, right, of an economic downturn of some significance, which is being talked about should the tariffs impact? And what will that do to the assessment level of properties? People may, some people may be getting out of their properties in a hurry, selling them at bargain prices. What does that do to the assessed value of the housing stock in that area or the commercial stock? It would go down. Where does this work in that scenario as an example? I don't want any, I don't expect any answers. They need to be built into the financial modeling. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Parslow. Counsel Sudnick?
Thank you, worship. All good points. Just to Counsel McDonald's point of what if they all took advantage of it? I sort of hope they all do because I don't see a long line of people just waiting at the gates to come and develop and build in our community this year. So if we put this out there as a bit of an incentive, it doesn't mean that it can't be changed or that it's written in stone. But if we don't start somewhere, then 20 years from now, we're wondering about what happened if this is a good idea.
Thank you, Counsel Sudnick. Just to touch on a little bit, so, one, if this is to move forward, is it two separate bylaws? Would it be one for new builds and would it be one for?
It'd be one bylaw.
One, so, because I'm just thinking, the new part is a little simpler and cleaner, right? Like it's, because I, I think of like if, you know, like Counsel Sudnick said, if 10 businesses came here this year and wanted to build because of this, there's no cost to us. Even if we give them 100% the first year, we got 10 new businesses to our community that on the second year are going to be paying. And then third year and fourth year, it's going to generate revenue. So the, it, it's a little bit different than, on the enhancements, right? Because enhancements, I didn't think about the small things at a home, but, you know, I invested in my home and enhanced it and your assessment doesn't go up significantly. So it wouldn't really like impact that. That'd be more if you're taking a home that's, you know, ready to be ripped down, that's worth $100,000 and you spend a significant amount and redo it. But, so that's why I was wondering if there, if it made sense to do two different ones. Because the new one, the other thing is, is the enhancement sounds like there's a little bit more that needs to come with that. And this is something that I see that I, I want, I'd like it to move forward as quick as possible. So if there's something that's going to hold it up and it could be done separate, but just my thoughts when, when everybody was talking, if it could be separately. The other thing is, is say we do this and we do 100% and we get 50 businesses come the first year and it's way oversubscribed, can we change it?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, you always, council's always got the ability to amend the bylaw. But once the folks are into the program, they're into it and then it would be for anybody subsequent to that. But, but again, you know, talk about the 100% exemption. I just want to make sure we're, we're clear that that's 100% on the new portion of assessment. It's not on all the assessments. So it's not like we're going to lose anything.
No.
The base assessment, now that goes back to what Counsel Parslow was saying. If assessment stays flat or even grows a bit, your base is going to stay the same. All you're foregoing is any additional assessment that comes with new builds or renovations. So you're not technically losing, like 50 businesses come, your, your base assessment stays the same. It's just that renovation amount is what you're foregoing. So I just wanted to make sure we're, we're clear on that.
Yeah, that's, and only on the city's portion, right? So there's no cost because we're not.
No, it's just foregone, foregone money that you, you didn't get that you could have. Now, if assessment was to go down, that would probably throw a different wrinkle into things because that's where you'd really want to see some new assessment coming online and you might have just foregone all that new assessment to try and balance off the, the decrease overall, right? So that's a different, you know, mix that might be, you know, an unfortunate circumstance, but.
Well, we can't predict the future, but if assessment goes down, whether we have this or not, we're going to be dealing with that, right? So, yeah.
But we can certainly, when we bring back the bylaw, we can run some scenarios of examples that, you know, based on some, you know, assessment, you know, assumptions can give us what you look like.
Yeah, well, I think I like what Counsel Sudnick said about Grand Prairie. But I mean, there, there it was tiered on a $25 million investment, right? So we're not even, that's in a different level than we're talking, so. Counsel Parslow?
Well, I think there's wisdom to have in two bylaws. If, I think what this new business stuff, it's simple to explain to the general public. The others are far more complex. And I can assure you, this will need a lot of clear explaining to many of the business community and residential community. So I, I liked your thoughts about two separate bylaws. Get on with one quickly.
For new development in all areas.
That's just a, you know, I see no complexity there.
Yeah, easy to educate and explain.
That's easy to explain. The rest might be easy, but I mean, I don't know who taught you, but some of the people who taught to me expect some pretty detailed explanations. And, yeah, we need to work it out and have all the key what-ifs answered.
Thank you, Counsel Parslow. Counsel Earl?
Thank you, worship. So with respect to bylaws, so as far as simplicity, one or two bylaws, is it basically the value of the permit irrespective of whether it's a renovation or a new piece of construction? It is what it is, right?
Yeah, through your worship, I, I think from a renovation perspective, if it's applied similarly to new build, it's just, it's just the, the value that triggers it. And I'm maybe oversimplifying it. But we'll certainly look at the, the mechanics of it and see if there's an advantage to go one way or the other if one's going to take longer for us to.
I guess one of the other wrinkles potentially that if it's a new build, there could be some cost development charges. And I, I don't assume we're looking to exempt those because that does, that is getting into where it's not just foregoing revenue, but it does come at a hard cost to us.
Three worship, that's a separate discussion that we may talk at some point about, you know, you could, going back to downtown discussions, you know, if you wanted to incentivize that area and see, you know, there's a spot where you could talk about D C C reductions or things like that. But that's, that's a different discussion than this one.
Okay. And yeah, I guess just generally as kind of my, my last comment on it and touching on what Mike said about, you know, whether you do it this way or that way or that way, I think it's important to move on. We do, you know, nothing we do is set in stone. We do have the ability to adjust and alter things. And with something as ambitious as this, I would be very surprised if we 100% stuck the landing on the first. That's generally not how these kind of initiatives roll out. But we do need to, you know, yes, we'll, we'll look forward to Devon's report on modeling and the details and, you know, all that stuff as we inform our decision. But I think what's most important to me is that we move forward on something and don't fall in the trap of, of just intransigence because we don't know enough. I mean, we can, we do reserve the right to change our mind if we try something and it doesn't work the way we want it to. But as a mayor noted, we've, we've had kind of a tepid local growth here for some time. And this is something we can do that, to my mind, comes at, you know, if our biggest problem is that it's so oversubscribed that we end, you know, that, that would be a wonderful problem to have in, in my eyes. So I, I, you know, whether it's, you know, staged 100% to 0% over five years or it's 20% over 10 years, I'm happy to consider all those things when modeling's presented. What's most important to me is that we do it. And obviously, there is going to be a Goldilocks zone we shoot for with respect to what is enough to incentivize development, but not so much that we forego revenue that we might have otherwise been able to get had we not incentivized it. But, you know, that's, that's a discussion. Like I said, I don't imagine we're going to stick the landing 100% either way, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Earl. Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, worship. Excuse me. I, sorry, excuse me. I was focusing on the rebuilds, the, not the new. I, I completely agree with Counsel Sudnick that we do want the new builds immediately. And that's why I think the two different bylaws would be good. If we could fast-track a new build bylaw out right away and then get into the nuances of a renovation bylaw, that would be probably to our benefit 100%. I agree, if we could get a, a huge intake in new builds, all of a sudden, it would be absolutely amazing. And thank you for the clarification on the 100%. I totally missed that and it went right over my head. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Any other discussion? Melissa?
Through your worship. So I, and Devon can jump in too, but we were wanting to, to get some direction on specific stuff as mentioned in the report, but maybe I'll jump back to that. But a few things is the bylaw, just so council's aware, the bylaw is just one part of the program. And so even though we have a bylaw, there is still work on what does this program look like? What is the staff resources to oversee it? There's developing an agreement, a certificate. So I just want to make sure that council knows that it's not just the bylaw. One other piece of information that I did have with something to consider, and this was in that first report, with the average house of a home of 277,000, the annual municipal portion is $3,000. And so something council can consider is, is that the type of activity? And that goes back to what's in the report on mentioning, what is the intent of this program? And is that the sort of activity that you want to encourage? And do you feel like that's the right amount? And if that is, then that's fine. But that's kind of what we're trying to gauge here with potentially going across citywide.
Yeah, to speak to the, the kinds of properties that you'd be incentivizing, one of the, one of the comments here is, commercial and residential are two different scales of economy, right? Two different scales of costs. And term, term is something else to consider. If you're doing a, a multi-year, like you're talking eight or 10 years, that's generally not going to be very, very much incentive to a residential developer who's going to build that property and then sell it. The, they're not going to benefit from an eight-year incentive. Whereas a commercial property who's building and then working out of that property and they're owning that will see that incentive. So depending on how you draft the bylaw, it will likely be aimed at different types of developments, whether you look at the term or the overall eligible project cost limits. Something else to consider on this, that I had a comment here in this, in this report, is the aesthetic element. Do you want to include an aesthetic element in the requirements of the bylaw? Part of this stemmed out of the downtown revitalization, which we just touched on with the Main Street. If you include some part of something where somebody passing by on the outside sees a development, is it just an interior or do you want to see an interior and exterior renovation? Are you okay with them just, you know, changing office spaces and being okay with that? That's something to consider as well. Just want to touch on that.
Second that a little bit to that, I, my thoughts are like on the enhancements. I mean, it would only be based on assessment. So whether they renovate the inside or exterior wouldn't matter because if you ran, you know, on your home, if you renovate the interior of your home, your assessment's not going to change, right? On a business, you know, if you are, you know, On a business, you know, if you are, you know, I can speak with my other hat, I just invested a bunch into a business and on the interior, your assessment doesn't go up. It's on exterior or structural changes, right? So I don't know, yeah, I, I don't know if you would need that. I, the other thing that was brought up was the housing. I didn't think of like a developer building a house and then selling it, how that would work, but I guess, you know, we had how many homes built here last year? I think not a lot, right? So, but talking to a couple of home builders, you know, I think any little bit would help them. Like I know you're talking on an average home of $270,000, you'd be talking to $3,000. Like, they're kind of looking at everything right now because the, the costs have went up so high to build and they don't sell for what they're worth. Like, they are looking at anything that would save 2,000 or 3,000 or 4,000, like really anything that would make it more viable to do, so I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, and just that kind of brought up a question for us that I don't have an answer for is, is it transferable?
Well, yeah, that's who you'd have to ask.
Yeah, so those are, you know, if it's a homeowner that builds it for themselves, well, then that's great, and, but if a developer builds it and sells it, don't know if that's, you know, those are questions we have to answer.
Yeah, and you wonder if he was, because I mean, when we were talking about like industry or business, it wasn't about a developer coming in, they're not building a building and selling it, that it's the actual person, yeah. Let me think of that, too.
Counsel Parslo?
Well, these last comments just illustrate, we need to go slow and really think hard about all the permutations and what-ifs, because before you launch it, you better have covered off a lot of these different, different factors. Initially, I understood this focused as on business, I thought. That was in the, and having the targeted area just downtown, but unless I, my hearing's playing games with me, you're now talking about citywide. And I wonder about the magnitude of that and the workload that that might generate given comments that Melissa's made. I, I have no idea about these things, but, you know, it's, for all the work on, I'm digging way in my past, but on implementing change is start offs, start, be slow with, if there's any complexity, be slow. If there's not, such as the new builds, go ahead, right? But I'm talking business here, but if it's, if it's quite new and somewhat, you, you may be just treading, you're putting your toe in water sort of thing, confine it to the, I would say, confine it to the business development area and then expand it if, if it works.
Yeah, could define it to the classes of industry.
Counsel Earl?
Thank you, Worship. With respect to Devin's inquiry about the, whether or not we want to have some sort of theming or design, compulsory design component, I'm not sure if compulsory is the way to go. I know the District of Tumblr Ridge has kind of a design guidelines webpage that includes color palettes and stuff like this. Now, I, yeah, I mean, I'm hesitant to insist a, a business take a certain path, but I think most people in the downtown core, if given, provided with a supplementary piece of information about color schemes and, and stuff like that, I would probably be amenable to it. And I think maybe a soft touch on that might be a, a good starting place if you end up with people, you know, not, it, it starts to look ridiculous because everybody's all over Hell's Half Acre, then we might have to revisit it, but I know the district, they've got, you know, site furnishings, recommending color palettes, stuff like that, guiding principles and things of that nature. And I don't know to what extent that would be effective, but I think it's a good place to start.
Through your worship, the OCP has a form and character, and any renovations or building permits would likely require a development permit because it's in our development permit area. So that would help with, our OCP does guide development. This is more a question of if you require an aesthetic element to the construction or not. I don't think the bylaw would get too in-depth on what that looks like, other than just requiring an outside passerby to be seeing the, basically visual impact of it. If that makes sense. I was also hoping to touch on two things, to your point, Counsel Parslo, the kinds of property activities or circumstances being incentivized. We provided an example based on past comments at the top of page three, new business, commercial and retail investment, new employment, new investment in housing. So does that resonate with council? Or would you like to see that scope expanded or reduced? Also, something that would touch on later was, if you're interested, is my bonus question at the end. If you're interested in an economic analysis, I provided a preliminary budget for what that would look like. So some of the questions are, what is the impact? What does this affect? How does this affect? How does this change the developer's bottom line? An economic analysis could help us understand how impactful a bylaw like this could be. So two questions. First, on the kinds and if that resonates with you, the kinds of development. The second one is if you're interested at all in pursuing that, recognizing you can't give direction in this forum, come back with a report for resolution.
Yeah. So your first question was just on the kinds of residential, like whether it would be...
The kinds of construction to be, the kinds of property activities or circumstances that will be incentivized through the bylaw. So basically the main objective of the bylaw, what are you looking to, to stimulate? Top of page three of the report.
Thank you, Devin. Counsel Parslo?
Well, my perspective is that we initiate it for only to new industrial or commercial businesses in defined areas of the community, one being downtown and one might be some, one or two of the industrial parts. And I like the idea of the economic impact study.
Thank you, Counsel Parslo.
I'd be like fine, I think doing like industry and, you know, commercial, but not defined areas, I think there's all sorts of areas, whether it's out by the airport or Eighth Street, Alaska, downtown, there's a lot of room for development. But I, I get, the residential part, I think, brings in some complications as well, but then you're talking about like, you know, we're in a housing, you know, struggles here for low income or, you know, affordable housing. If we could enhance somebody building in an apartment building, I'd, you know, that would be beneficial to come out of here. So that would then be under the residential, right? So still kind of like leaning towards, yeah.
Blanket, go ahead, Melissa.
Through your, through your worship, so for information, you can classify the bylaw based on the activity as opposed to the class. So you can choose apartment, low-income housing, and then you're not classifying it on class one. So you can, you can differentiate based on that, which still achieves if that's your desired result.
So it's not all that residential?
So it's not all class one. You can just segregate based on the activities you want to see. It could be seniors housing, it could be daycare, it can, there's a lot of options.
And through your worship, so the, the eligible project definition, I've included the classes there. When we talked with our consultants, and this was probably my confusion on, on creating this, is he said sometimes it's helpful to talk about the classes and what you want to include, but if you notice right below in the eligible project definition, we haven't actually included single-family residential. So it's mixed, multi-unit, mixed-use, seniors housing. Those are really the only applicable projects to this incentive. A developer building a single-family home wouldn't, wouldn't qualify.
Under this?
Under this example that we've provided here.
Okay. I guess on the other part of that, like, I mean, we had how many building permits pulled last year for housing, like one? So to blanket it and get 10, you're, we're going to, we're going to generate more revenue for the city, maybe not the first year, but we are down the road, right? So, which is about, yeah, the long-term longevity of where we're going, so. I guess we've had lots of discussion, and you both brought up some extra points, so do you feel comfortable from here or is there?
What board do you mean?
Yeah, basically.
Through your worship, what I, I mean, we heard lots, we've heard some differing opinions, then that's fine. I think what we can do is, the next step would be to bring back a draft. Is that where we? So before we bring a draft bylaw, we'll be working on it, but before we do that, we'll bring back some examples of how these are working in other communities as well, some more information essentially. We'll bring back a draft and council's going to have to sort through what they want to see because it's not going to land on everybody's plate the same way.
Yep.
But it'll be the framework to, you know, there is some commonality in what we heard, but there's some other stuff that, you know, there's some differences, so we'll have to work through that.
Yeah, for sure. So then, I guess for what Melissa and Devin needed to, the next steps, do they feel like they have any more questions they need right now answered to help get to that next?
I think we're, we're good for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Earl?
Thank you, Worship. I'll be very quick. So with respect to the bonus question, the economic analysis, which would, you know, potentially address some of the apprehension expressed on this side of the table around certain unknowns. If that doesn't happen, what is the differential in the quality of, you know, we're going to, are we going to be informed enough to make a choice or do you, for the sake of everyone's peace of mind? I mean, $30,000 is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, when you're talking about generational renewal of the downtown core, the, you know.
Yeah, through your worship, I think it's a, a bit of a piece to understand how the bylaw would impact the developers and what you would get out of it likely is what would mean the most to them. So it may inform how you want to shape the bylaw based on the feedback from that, from that report. Because that would be going out, talking about to the developers, how that affects their performer and what things they consider, which would help you understand what you may want to consider when you create this bylaw to incentivize it a little more than you would without that information.
I assume that that would slow the process down though, too, because that's going to take some time to get that information to...
It, we could probably likely do it in parallel. I don't know how long the process takes, but I think by the time we bring that bylaw back, that draft, we could include that information.
Thank you. Thanks, Counsel Earl. All right, any other discussion on this? No? All right, so I guess a motion to...
Sorry.
Counsel McDonald?
Thank you. Should we make a motion right now then for the...
It would have to be after.
Oh, we can't, oh, yes, right.
So when you go back to open, I guess you could.
But do we need, like, directions kind of understood and what the next steps are, right?
But if specifically if council wanted to do this, this analysis, because there's money to be spent on that, then I would want a, a motion on that, but.
Okay, thank you. All right, so a motion to adjourn committee of the whole, Counsel Kemp, second, Counsel Apollonio, I'll call that to vote. Vote should be open now. Vote is closed and it's carried.
Regular meeting of council for Monday, February 24th, back to order. Our next order of business was... All right, thank you, Worship. Couple of things to touch on, a quick water update. The cold weather over the last few weeks have slowed flows in the Kiskatna. Still hanging in there, but definitely have slowed. This, this weather we're seeing will likely change things. We were at Bear Hole Lake recently and the levels of the lake, despite the release all winter long, are, are holding steady, so that's good news. So that's, yeah, good for now. The warm weather, as we saw over the weekend, is melting everything quickly, so, you know, we've, we've got some challenges with water and runoff. That's, that's inevitable with any, any melt. Crews are out trying to deal with trouble spots, but with water comes potholes, so that's going to be another issue we're going to have for a bit until we get some of this water off some of those areas. But certainly encourage people to, to call in or to email us at Public Works and, and let us know, and we can certainly respond to those. Was at the CAO forum last week, appreciate the opportunity to go down, see all my counterparts, great discussion, some good learnings, some takeaways. It was interesting, I ran into the CAO of Penticton on a walk, so I had an opportunity to have a discussion about community safety plans. And did you know that they went from three bylaw officers to 17? And that's to deal with their challenges around the unhoused. So that's, his comment to me is that was, they're cheaper than our CMP officers. But there was a need, yeah. I think that's probably all part of that is bylaw slash safety.
They're more like shares, you know, but...
Yeah, so it was interesting. Again, you always get the appreciation that things could always be worse and definitely there's some challenges out there for some folks, and we have our own and they have their own, so it was good. I know Counsel Parslo's going to ask me about tariffs because he gave me a heads-up, so was there any discussion on tariffs? Yes, there was, we had pretty much a whole session talking about that. Unfortunately, there's no, there's no silver bullet or an answer to this. Various people are doing various things. Some are trying to procure in advance, like we did a couple of years ago, to try and secure, you know, supplies, whether it's pipe or valves or whatnot. They're trying to purchase it as soon as they can. Others are increasing their budgets to add a bigger contingency, which I guess my perspective on that is if you do that now, that means you have to knock off some projects on the assumption, or you wait until you get your tenders in and if prices are up, then you knock some projects off if it happens. So either way, the results are probably the same, because you've only got limited amount of capital to work with, but, yeah. So it was, overall was good. Any questions on anything that I had there? Perfect. Thank you.
I'm just wondering if you would entertain a motion stemming from the committee of the whole meeting we've just had?
Yes, would that be under new council business? No? Okay, so next order of business will be mayor's business. Counsel Parslo would you like to?
Yes, I'd like to move that we have an economic impact study conducted on the proposed tax, correct me if I used the wrong language here, tax deferrals, tax incentive, incentive system that we're considering.
Thank you, Counsel Parslo, second. Counsel McDonald?
Speaking to it, I, I would just like to, for us all to have absolute clarity of the ramifications of this through, through the various schemes that we might consider. So I think it's wise to, to do this.
Thank you, Counsel Parslo.
I didn't have my mic on. I have a couple of comments. One, in the committee hall, you said it's $30,000? Did I, I don't, I don't know if I heard that from...
Yeah, through your worship, in the report, I had up to 30,000, 20 to 30,000 is the kind of general budget.
And timeframe?
I am unsure on the timeframe, but it would be, we would probably have it completed, we'd try to get it completed before the bylaw comes in, because it would be part of the bylaw.
So I guess from this, we're wanting to know what the economic impact is going to have on a business coming in and getting exempted. Like, I guess I, I just don't know what new learnings would come from there, so maybe I need some more comments from council, because I think of, if I can envision... I need some more comments from council because I think of, if I can envision one building getting built, I can tell you what the economic impacts are that I would think would be the 100%, the first year, 75, 25. So what more info would we be getting than that, I guess?
Well, through your worship, this wouldn't be about the economic impacts of the bylaw. An economic analysis would allow us to understand from the developer's perspective how much this bylaw would incentivize a developer to, I mean, how much it would impact their pro forma in whether they chose to invest in Dawson Creek or not. So it may be able to provide elements that would allow us to, I guess, finally tune our bylaw to what developers would be looking for.
So we could gain some information from this that could assist it to make it stronger?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, worship. And that's just what I was going to say, that Devin had mentioned before, that this would help us greatly in getting this right the first time, instead of backtracking a year from now, saying, oh, we missed it, now we missed a couple of opportunities, where if we talk to developers right off the bat, we're engaging and we just, we get it right.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion, Counselar Parslow?
I just want to make sure that the study will include the full spectrum of classes, right? Like somebody, developer wants to build an apartment block or new subdivision or what have you.
All right. Thank you, Counselar Parslow. Counselar Parslow, is that what you're, oh. Is that the intent of what you were explaining?
Yes, the last part is critical. Yeah, I didn't say that, but it is critical. That was implicitly not the report, so, right?
Okay, I'm just going to read this out before we vote, just for those that are watching, so that council directs staff to engage a specialized consultant to conduct an economic analysis to help determine the appropriate level of revitalization, tax exemption, and assesses how tax exemption impacts a developer's financial projections, pro forma, and overall project feasibility at a cost of up to $30,000. Any other discussion? I guess I'm just a little bit, from my side is, I understand if it's going to bring new information, but from a developer, I guess what you're talking, yeah. I don't know, it's $30,000 is what's got, just working in my head as if it's spending, that makes sense, but, yeah, okay. There's no more discussion, I'm going to call this. Oh, sorry. This might run my head a lot.
Through your worship?
Yes.
Who seconded that motion?
Counselor McDonald. And thank you for drafting that. Counselor McDonald? Vote is closed. It's carried. All right, next order of business is 13 diary. There's nothing in the diary. 14 consent calendar, nothing there. 15 media question period, there's no media. And then that's it. We'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.